All right, the time being 6:01 PM and this being the Plymouth Select Board, I will call to order this, the Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, meeting of the Town of Plymouth Select Board. Please join the Board in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the Board are joining us here in person at the Great Hall at Town Hall. We have a member of the Board joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public, or presenters, or applicants may be joining us either in person at the Great Hall or over the Zoom webinar platform throughout the evening. Members of the public that wish to attend the meeting or observe it may come to the Great Hall. They may join us via the Zoom webinar platform. The login information for that is included on the agenda that is posted on the Town website. Or they may observe the meeting on Comcast Channel 9, or Verizon Channel 47, or the local scenes YouTube streaming channel. Members of the public are also reminded pursuant to Massachusetts General Law that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. Presently, we are aware of a recording being made by the local scene for the Zoom and the web and television broadcast. All right, so that brings us into our agenda. First thing listed on our agenda is a public hearing. So in accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at the Plymouth Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 6:00 PM to consider the application for a transfer of an annual all alcohol package store license from Patriot Spirits Incorporated, doing business as Liquor &amp; More, 35 Home Depot Drive, Michael John Patterson, Manager, to Mishty LLC, doing business as Liquor &amp; More, 35 Home Depot Drive, Rena Patel, Manager. Description of premises will be as follows. One-story cement block building containing 4,100 square feet, occupying Westerly End cap, space divided into two handicap access toilets and storage room, had rear of building and sales area at front of building. One main entrance at front and employee ingress egress at rear. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should plan to attend this meeting. We'll declare the public hearing open. Do we have anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? Yes, please come to the podium and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Alex Pujol from Demarcus Law Offices in Lynn, representing the applicant Mishty LLC. With me here is Rena Patel, the proposed manager of record, and we also have a member and manager of the LLC with us in the audience as well. The applicant is purchasing all the assets, including the liquor license of Patriot Spirits, Inc., doing business as Liquor &amp; More, at 35 Home Depot Drive in Plymouth. The applicant will continue operating the liquor store just as it is now, same hours, same names, same products, location, and they will be implementing scanners in the store if not already there, once approved. This is Rena Patel. She is served safe certified. She will be training three to four weeks before the closing at another liquor store in the area. So we are seeking approval of the transfer of their liquor license, approval of Rena Patel as manager of record, and approval of the pledge of the license and the inventory to South Shore Bank because part of the funding of the purchase prices alone.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else here to speak on behalf of the applicant? You can speak just yourself, but if the other people that are here want to speak, they're welcome to do so. Okay. Do we have any questions from Board members for the applicant or the applicant's representatives? Okay, hearing and seeing none, thank you. Anyone here other than the applicant to speak in favor of the application? Is that a hand on Zoom? Yes. I can't read it, but there's a name that starts with R on Zoom. If you'd like to unmute yourself. He's put his hand back down, so unless it pops back up for a third time, we will assume he's satiated. All right, anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? All right, seeing no hands, physical or digital popping up, I will, any, any questions from Board members? Last call. All right, we'll close the hearing. Thank you. Wish of the Board in regards to the application.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Quintle moves that we approve the application for the transfer of the license. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and Ms. Iaquinto seconds. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Golden mouthed yes, although we couldn't hear him very well, but Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that brings us into the listed licenses. We have outdoor amplified music and change of manager in regards to liquor, three total listed licenses. Wish of the Board in regards to the listed licenses.
I move to approve.
All right, Ms. Iaquinto moves to approve the listed licenses as a group. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Quintle seconds. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Thank you, heard you that time. Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous. We have approved the listed licenses. That brings us into the next agenda item, which is the July 4th Committee update. We are joined by Mr. Matt Tavares to provide us with another update on July 4th. Thank you, Mr. Tavares.
Good evening. Thank you for having us in. Matt Tavares, July 4th Plymouth Committee, along with Jeff Metcalf and Anne Marie Winchester from the July 4th Committee, to give you the, probably the last and final update. We have about 16 days until the 4th of July is here upon us, and we're, hopefully have sunny skies, no fog, no rain, and we can, we're gonna get through what's shaping up to an amazing parade. Our parade, just to let the general public know, is open to neighborhoods, individuals, businesses, politicians. It's still open for registration until the end of the day tomorrow, so we have about 24 hours left to get your registrations in. If you'd like to be in the parade, we welcome any and all entries, and you can sign up on our website, julythe number four plymouth.com. As far as everyone always wants to know, how's the fundraising going? As you know, the July 4th Plymouth Parade and Fireworks are put on by our nonprofit. We, we have no, you know, paid employees or anything like that, and our goal this year was for $103,000, I mean, excuse me, $130,000, and we're at about $102,000 right now. We do have some outstanding pledges that we hope to see come in over the next 16 days, but I would say that I, personally, the committee would, would like to see, hopefully, within the community, some way to get at least another $8,000. And when we do that, we can top off our fundraising goal for this year. But that being said, we're at the point, we're in the, we're in the red zone, to, you know, reference football here, and we are, we're good to go, and we're gonna be putting on the parade and fireworks as planned, as we've done year after year. We're just here to talk about, very briefly and very, very quickly, I'll put a presentation up on the slide about how the parade works, so that everyone in the public is aware, because there'll be road closures. But before I do that, I also wanted to mention to the Board and to the public that we have our honorary parade grand marshals this year that has been decided. It's Chris and Diane Hart. We're honoring, for the, the Harts, for their many years of serving the veterans within our community. I think you all know their Nathaniel Hale Foundation, and then the Three Hearts Farm down in South Plymouth. And what we've actually seen, and what we encourage the public to do, is if you go to our website to make a donation, you can actually make a donation in honor of someone. And if you'd like to do that in honor of the Hart family, I'm sure they would, they would love to see that and help put on this parade, but they'll be in the parade, leading off the parade for us this year. To begin the day, at 7:00 AM, I'm just gonna make this announcement for them, since they're not here, the Old Colony Club does stand at the top of Coles Hill and read the Declaration of Independence. And then after 7:00 AM, at 7:30, we'll have our 5K Road Race, and Anne Marie, if you could update the, the public as to the closures on that, and then we'll...
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for having us in again tonight to do our final update. Things with the road race are shaping up really well right now. We have, we're just under 600 people registered, which is up almost 20% from last year. So typically, from this point forward, we usually will see numbers close to double, depending on the weather, of course. So we're probably looking at between 11 and 1,200 people for this year's race. It will be the first year ever that we've gone over 1,000 participants for this event, so we're really excited about that. The road race is a fundraising event for the parade and the fireworks, so the more runners we have, actually, the more money we can give back to the parade and fireworks as well. We've made an initial donation already, and then the, the final part of the funding will be done after the race, so that will also be added to that, that amount. We also will have the food trucks down at the waterfront. Those will be coming in early in the morning, and they will be there all day. And we did just have Tech Edge come in as a sponsor. Once again, they are one of our lead sponsors and have been for the last four or five years, and, and we just got their donation confirmed as well, so we're thrilled that they'll be joining us again, both as a sponsor and, and as a parade participant. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to Jeff, so he can go through the, the parade lineup and how that all happens as they come down Water Street.
And so before Jeff jumps up here, our parade does step off from Cordage Park, but we just wanted to go over how, driving through there for our participants, Jeff's gonna walk you through that. Just because Cordage Park is open, there are medical facilities within the building, and I don't want anyone in the public that uses those medical facilities, they are open on the 4th of July, to know that they can't get in there. They actually get priority and will be able to, to get to the front of the business center.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us again. Yeah, just wanted to show you the, the map once again of Cordage Park. I'm sure you've seen this several times over the years, but I, I first want to thank Kristen LaCory at JD Cordage LLC and Cordage Development LLC, because they've allowed us once again to use the property to be able to line up and start the parade in the facility. As many of you may know, for years, we were, we were up, up the street, but this is such a better location, being able to get in and get out and make this work. But just so people can read this, the, the lower section here is Court Street, where the, the laser is, and then this is the, the entry to Cordage. And anybody that's participating, or even if you're dropping off, this is the entrance that you would take, and you continue past Mill Pond and come around the building this way. What we don't want you to do is take a right immediately, or take a right here because of the dialysis patients. But if you come in here, you know, follow the pond, carry around to the back of what is Mill Number One, and the tower is right here. So you're gonna come around the brick building, and as you come around, come this way, and there'll be a few of us right here, this location, just in front of Building 11. And this is where the 1620 Winery is, so you'll be coming around the building, and then as we meet you here, we will give you direction, and based on your registration, you'll be located in either Division 1, 2, or 3, which is, as you come around the building here, the back parking lot, Division 3, is here where the Mill Store used to be. Division 2's in the middle, Division 1 is up front, because obviously, as we leave to start the parade, they'll be leaving first and following the road out to the, to the main entrance. But I also want to mention that you would be coming this way, even if you're, if you have a, a child or a couple of people that you're dropping off, you can come to the same spot, come, come this way, and you can drop off right here. The participants can walk around the building and either get to Division 1, 2, or 3, but if you're dropping off, that means you can continue your car this way, come around the back of the building, and come and go back out the way that you came in. It creates this nice loop and keeps traffic moving so that we can get people in and into their placements, Division 1, 2, or 3. So, and as Matt said, the, the parade starts right at 9 o'clock, but we'll move people to the front here by like quarter of 9:00. And as many of you've seen in the past, there is a contingent and a lineup of fire engines that are lined up up the street where we used to be, and we generally meet them here about quarter of 9:00. The, the fire engines take off, they start the parade, and then we follow in right behind them. But looking, looking for another good time, luckily, this is on Friday, so it's not a Saturday where there's a chance of rain, so, you know, so we, we hopefully should be good to go, you know, but looking, looking forward to it and hope it's a good day for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, typically the parade, you know, depends on how slow or fast people are walking, but typically I would expect the parade to take up the majority of the streets until, I would say, estimate about 11:00, just to be safe, also to allow for traffic to flow out. And then later on in the evening, we do have the Plymouth Philharmonic Concert on the waterfront. They've been a great partner of ours throughout the years. Their concert ends with, typically with the 1812 Overture, and immediately the fireworks start going off. It kind of reminds me of my time down in DC and, and how they would time that concert. So you get a little bit of the national flavor here in America's hometown in Plymouth. And that concert is, at 7:00? It's 7:30, excuse me. Starts, begins at 7:30. Great seating on Coles Hill. Water Street is closed. You can even be standing in that street as well. Wonderful viewing opportunities for the fireworks right down on our, our waterfront, but I know some people in town have their own favorite hiding spots that they don't want me to publicize. And we look forward to having a great event with Pyrotechnico providing the fireworks. Once again, this year, they've been our partner for over 40 years, so we're looking forward to that. There is no rain date for the 4th of July festivities, just so everyone is well aware of that. That has been practiced over the last couple of years. We are looking to change that for next year and going forward, and we're working with our public service personnel. We can't thank the Plymouth Police Department, the Plymouth Fire Department, DPW, Brewster Ambulance, all of our town personnel, town manager, for working with us each year in and year out. The town staff has been great to, to helping with us, keeping us informed with where they're at on situations, and what they need from us and what we need from them. So we're very excited to have, hopefully, a fantastic 4th of July, and like Jeff said, it is on a Friday, so we should be good to go weather-wise. That was probably famous last words, but we're looking for a great 4th of July weekend, and if you have any questions, I, I'm happy to answer them. But the one last thing I would like to mention is that we need volunteers. We need volunteers, just like every other organization within this community. This community has been great to step up and to help out, but we particularly need volunteers parade day morning in Cordage Park. We need help to help line up that parade, direct traffic. We give you everything you need. We give you a lot of authority, but we just ask that you be kind and understanding, that it's stressful for some individuals getting in there, particularly parents that are dropping off kids that are a little bit smaller. But if you would like to volunteer to help us organize and line up the parade, please go to our website and contact us through our email form, and we would love to take your, your name and number, and we'll get in contact with you. We also need volunteers to help out in various spots throughout the parade. Maybe we need to have you carry a banner. Maybe we need to have you carry a sign for donations. We do have QR codes that we have walk through the parade route and get scanned by people watching. Oh, and actually, actually, this is a big one. This is a big ask of the community. If anyone would like to volunteer to be in an Uncle Sam uniform, our Uncle Sam unfortunately was unable to do it this year. So if you would like, we should probably use that as a fundraiser, you know, auction off, like you get the ability to be Uncle Sam. If you would like to be Uncle Sam, I don't mind what age you are, I don't mind, I have no restrictions on it, other than to know that you will be walking in red, white, and blue for about three miles along downtown, but I can tell you, as someone that walks the parade route year after year, it is probably one of the most satisfying experiences that you will ever have. The smiles and waves and thank yous that you get along that parade route are absolutely second to none. You cannot put a price on that feeling, and if you'd like to step up, we'd love to see you in the Uncle Sam uniform, and you can walk right along Lady Liberty, and you'll be right at the front, so when you finish, you can watch the entire parade. So we, we appreciate that. Also, reach out to us if you'd like to do that through our online platform, through email, through our website. But I think with that, I've said enough. Again, registration for the parade closes tomorrow, because we need to line it up and get it out to the participants, but online donations are open 365 days a year. So, thank you.
Can you plug the where you register and where to donate again, just?
Sure, so it's pretty much one-stop shopping. If you go to www.julythenumberfourplymouth.com, there are home buttons to either donate or parade info, and you click on those, and we'll walk you right through the steps. It does bring you to our second-hand hosting sites that do the registration for us and the online donations for us. And if you have any issues, you know, sometimes we have people that say, "I can't quite figure out this to register," or that. We are hyper-responsive in getting back to you, either via phone and walking you through it, or walking it, walking you through it via email.
All right, thank you. Any questions from any other Board members? All right, thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you. And again, lastly, I do, Mr. Golden, you're online, and, and for those of you in the room, as always, the Select Board is always welcome to walk right behind the Town of Plymouth banner in the beginning of the parade. If you choose to do so, I would just ask that you would be there by about 8:30 at the latest, just so we can have you there and, and in line. And then I look forward to seeing you all, and then I'll see you all at the reviewing stand when you come through, so, thank you.
I will see you there. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. That concludes that section of our agenda. Brings us into the next item, which would be our administrative notes. So we have a number of listed administrative notes this evening. Listed notes 6 and 9, we're, we have to pull those specifically related to what 6 is trying to do. We need to, the amendments to the Affordable Housing Trust that are proposed don't quite solve all the issues we need to solve, so we have to take that back to the drawing board to make it in compliance with the bylaw, and then that would potentially impact the term for number 9, so it doesn't make sense to move forward on that yet. So we will bring those back separately, but in regards to the other administrative notes, wish of the Board. Mr. Cohen?
Just one note on 6 and 9 with the Housing Trust. That was an article that went to town meeting, oh, 10 years ago, 10, 12 years ago. So if we're going to alter that, I'd like to follow the same procedures... So if we're going to alter that, I'd like to follow the same procedures that we followed when we created the Housing Trust, which was an act of town meeting. So I know that we were being presented in our administrative notes, some changing of the makeup of the committee, but I would ask that that be considered.
So I think we could consider that. I think what we're trying to do is make the structure of the Affordable Housing Trust comply with that vote of town meeting, is my understanding. So I don't think we're changing anything from town meeting. I think we're just trying to make it comply with that vote, which I don't, fortunately, I don't think it currently does erroneously. Would that be an accurate?
Well, we were given some paperwork that shows what the changes are. Maybe we should see the original warrant article in the motion that was used at the time.
Yes, we can get that as part of the updated item whenever it is ready for primetime.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So 6 and 9 are out, but in regards to remaining notes, 1 through 5, 7, 8, and 10 through 25, the wish of the board.
Mr. Chair, if there are no objections, I move to vote on all of these as a group.
All right. Ms. Iaquinto has moved to vote on 1 through 5, 7, 8, and 10 through 25 as a group. Do we have a second?
Second.
Has been moved, it has been seconded. Any discussion on any admin notes or moving them as a group by any members? Bill, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. All right, I will call for the vote. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So it is unanimous. We have approved all listed admin notes except for 6 and 9. That brings us into our board and committee appointments. So we have a number of board and committee appointments this evening. This is generally an annual process to have the standard appointment for these boards and committees at this time, and then some vacancies come up through the year that we fill subsequently. Members of the public, I was going to mention this later in new business, but it could be relevant now, for members of the public that are watching at home. So we have started publishing the packet for the Select Board on the website, so that'll come out on, if Town Hall is open on a Friday, that'll be posted on the website on Friday. If Town Hall is closed on a Friday for a holiday or some other reason, we're going to try and get that out on Thursday, so that members of the public can see what, not just the agenda, but also the packet materials. Members of the board will get the packet a little earlier in the week and have time to review it, but that will give members of the public the time to review it as well. And if they wanted to reach out to any board members and ask questions, or do whatever they'd like to do, they'll have that opportunity to do so. So in today's packets is a lot of applications and supporting materials. We will be, when we are posting the packet, we have our certain personal identifying information, like if somebody's birth date or social security number is on an application, we're going to redact that, but you'll be able to see everything that doesn't need to be redacted for those reasons as a member of the public. And in terms of voting this evening, we are going to go through each, for example, we're going to start with the Agricultural Commission. We'll ask each individual applicant to come up. They can say a few words, we can ask them questions if we have any questions, and then once we've heard from everybody, that's when we would vote. When I am going to be calling on board members to vote, I'm going to call on you individually and ask for each level of, for each number of terms that are for a certain duration, how many votes you wish to cast. So for example, Agricultural Commission, there's three three-year terms, so I would call first on Mr. Golden and ask what three individuals he would like to vote for, for the three-year terms, just so it's clear. That way, we can go through the list in a relatively orderly fashion. You could vote on three names, you could abstain, you could vote on a couple names, and then vote no on any other applicant. You're not required to vote for anyone in particular, but that's procedurally how we're going to handle that. Any questions on the process component?
I just have a question.
Ms. Quintle? Yes.
On the people we appointed through administrative notes, are they sitting out here? Do they know they've been appointed, so they're not sitting here? I think maybe we should read the names of the ones that are approved in case they want to leave. I know they like to sit in.
Sure.
But I'm not saying that they're all here for that, but if there's anybody that's been appointed, I think we should just let them know, so they can...
Sure, we can do that. So Michelle Ann Christensen, Sarah Greenberg, Michael Hanlon, Roger Jansen, Don Williams, Eugene Blanchard, Len Levin, Jody Burkett, Dale Bryan, Connor Carlin, Gabriel Reams, Sarah Clem, Everett Malaguti, who I doubt will be leaving.
No.
Michaela Derkindren, Sharon Clark, Ethan Warren, Jody Burkett again, Linda White, Eric Parent, Steve Lyden, again, doubt Steve will be going, Ronald Dobrowski, Kristen Anderton, Sarah Engel, Zachary Hogg, Maureen Hickey, and Curtis Liddell. You have been appointed under the admin notes for those items. You may, some of you are also applicants for some of the other items. I trust you'll know which one you are if you're a multiple applicant, but if you were only under admin notes, you've already been appointed, and you are welcome to stay, but you're not required to do so. All right, thank you, Mr. Quintle. All right, so with that in mind, Agricultural Commission. We have three three-year terms, and the first applicant on our list is Evan Flaherty, who is an applicant for reappointment. Is Mr. Flaherty in physical attendance? Is Mr. Flaherty in virtual attendance?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a Samsung, you are unmuted.
Hello, thank you for having me again.
All right, Mr. Flaherty, if you'd just want to introduce yourself, say a few words about why you're interested in continuing to serve on the commission, and then we may have some questions for you.
My name is Evan Flaherty, lifelong resident of Plymouth. I mean, you might have remembered me from my appointment just short, five months ago in January. My wife and I own a small goat farm here in Plymouth. I have enjoyed my few months with the commission so far, and I appreciate the time that I've been allowed to be on the commission. I'm asking for reappointment to continue the good work that the commission's doing, and to help facilitate this next-year trial run of the commission taking over the, you know, what the Board of Health has relinquished to the commission for oversight throughout the town.
All right, thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Any questions for Mr. Flaherty from members of the board? All right, thank you. Next applicant is Gabrielle Reams. Is Gabrielle Reams in physical attendance? Is Gabrielle Reams in virtual attendance? She is not. Okay. The next applicant is Rebecca Nutter. I have a note that due to an unfortunate death in the family, she is unable to attend. Her condolences for the loss of her father, she's currently serving as the Chair of the Agricultural Commission. That brings us to Eric Parent. Is Eric Parent in physical attendance? Is Eric Parent in virtual attendance? Eric Parent is not with us. All right, well, we have all of the application materials, even for those not in attendance, so this would be our first opportunity to try out our voting method, so with that in mind. Mr. Golden, you have up to three votes to cast for Agricultural Commission appointees. How would you like to cast your votes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will vote for Evan Flaherty and Rebecca Nutter, and I will reserve my third vote, since the other two were not in attendance.
Okay, so would you like to, with the third vote, would you like to vote no on the remaining applicants, or abstain, or how would you like me to record that?
I will vote no on the remaining applicants.
Okay. Ms. Iaquinto, your three votes, up to three votes.
I would vote for Evan Flaherty, Gabrielle Reams, and Rebecca Nutter. Even though Ms. Reams is not in attendance, I think she has a very good reason for not being here, and I thought her credentials would support the goals of the committee.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, my first vote is Evan Flaherty, followed by Gabrielle Reams. As noted, she's not here tonight, but she provided a resume, which was quite impressive, and Rebecca Nutter.
All right. Mr. Quintle?
Evan Flaherty, Rebecca Nutter, and Gabriella.
Okay. And myself, I will vote for Evan Flaherty, Gabrielle Reams, and Rebecca Nutter, and those three. So Evan Flaherty has five votes, Rebecca Nutter has five votes, and Gabrielle Reams has four votes. Three is the magic number, so those are the three individuals that we have appointed to the Agricultural Commission. That brings us into, that brings us into the Airport Commission. We have two three-year terms for the Airport Commission. We have three applicants. The first listed applicant is Peter Connor. Is Peter Connor in physical attendance? Thank you. If you'd like to take the podium, introduce yourself, and say a few words about why you would like to serve on the Airport Commission.
Pete Connor, live in West Plymouth. I'd just like to say before I start that when Dennis Smith, who was one of the previous airport commissioners, decided that he was going to be traveling a lot and not ask for your reappointment this year, he said to me, "Why don't you apply?" And I said, "Dennis, I've thought of that over the years when I had my business at the airport," which I don't now, "and I've never done it." And the reason I've never done it is because this town has such a great airport commission as it is. So with that said, I would not be seeking a position that displaced... Old age. Paul's been a great member of the Airport Commission. He has vast aviation experience, and I would certainly hope that you would reappoint him. With that said, I would consider it an honor to be appointed to the other position. I'm somewhat retired, I'm still an aviation, an airworthiness inspector for the FAA, but I pretty much work from my house. We sold the business a couple of years ago. I think I can add a lot to the commission. They're a great bunch, but there is a pretty good learning curve when it comes to aviation and the Title 14 rules that we operate under. I don't want to go on forever, but I would seek your appointment to this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any questions for Mr. Connor, from members of the board? All right. The next listed applicant is Jonathan Mogul. Is Jonathan Mogul in physical attendance? It looks like Jonathan Mogul may be in virtual attendance. Mr. Mogul, if you'd like to unmute yourself? All right, and you can introduce yourself and explain in a few words why you would like to be appointed to serve on the Airport Commission. Mr. Mogul, you appear to be unmuted, but we cannot hear you if you are trying to communicate. Well, Mr. Mogul is not successfully communicating. He muted himself? He's unmuted himself. Are you trying to speak? We are trying to listen. Okay. Mr. Mogul appears to be having some technical issues. Why don't we try Paul Worcester, and then we'll circle back to Mr. Mogul in case he can resolve his technical issues in the interim. Mr. Worcester, if you would also like to take the podium and introduce yourself and explain why you would like to serve in a reappointed capacity?
Yes, good evening, lady gentleman, lady gentleman, Mr. Chair, managers. I am Paul Worcester. I'm just finishing up my 24th year serving on the Airport Commission. As much as I hate prepared statements, and by the way, no money was taken by Paul Worcester for that endorsement by Pete Connors. Thank you, Peter. The makeup of the Airport Commission is quite diverse in terms of backgrounds and professional accomplishments, and has such, has done much to promote and sustain a cohesive and complementary element of support to the airport staff and its programs. I believe I have been an important contributor. Also, as the airport has grown, it's become increasingly important that we engage an equally diverse set of airport neighbors. I believe my contributions to airport management have been appropriately insightful and beneficial to ensure the needs of both on-airport users and off-airport residents, and are both balanced and fair. I look forward to serving another term and ensuring continued success for the airport in the Town of Plymouth. Over.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Worcester. Any questions for Mr. Worcester? If no one else does. Mr. Worcester, is there anything that the Airport Commission is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing if you were to be reappointed, or anything that they're not doing that you would like to see them do if you were to be reappointed?
Great, loaded question.
Thank you.
I think the creation and current progress made by the Community Advisory Committee has been very helpful. I endorse and I support, obviously, as a member and representing the Airport Commission, that continues, and I think it's done a great job in terms of providing education, which was our first step in the creation and the development of the CAC members. And I think that's going to be an important means of outreach to the community in terms of the kinds of things that we can do at the airport, and just as important, the kinds of things that we cannot do at the airport. And most importantly, maintaining the airport at the current size. We call it a category B-2 airport. Technical term basically means the capabilities that it has now is not going to change. And with hopefully, the advancement of technology in the aviation business, things get quieter and more, even more so environmentally sensitive. So in that regard, I think we're on the right path to providing important information to the community and representing them, but equally, supporting the users that have committed to a long-term, whether it's through a mortgage with a hangar, or an airplane, or a business at the airport, that we also represent them in their interests as well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from any other members of the board? All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, let's see if Mr. Mogul has resolved his technical issues. Mr. Mogul, if you'd like to try again with unmuting yourself and introducing yourself?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so sorry about my technical difficulties. So my name's John Mogul. I'm a lifelong Plymouth resident in the Priscilla Beach neighborhood. I'm probably a little bit of an unorthodox candidate, as I am not a pilot, but I am the son of a Vietnam C-130 pilot and lifelong FAA employee, and now my son is training at Alpha One to hopefully become a commercial airline pilot. And I have a, you know, understanding and interest in aviation from a non-pilot's perspective, but I've seen how valuable the airport is as an asset to our town, and I've seen the inspiration and the training of, I think, our country's future pilots. There are a group of, you know, young adults and teens at Alpha One that are, you know, training to become pilots, and I've seen my son grow up watching these airplanes and loving the airport, and we're there all the time, and I'd like to offer my assistance if possible. I have small business and technical experience, being an engineer, running a small business on Falmouth on Cape Cod with about 20 people, and I think I could add some value to the commission, if you'd have me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mogul. Any questions from any board members for Mr. Mogul? All right. Hearing and seeing none, I will transition into the voting stage. So this is two three-year terms, so each member will be asked which up to two votes they would like to cast. So first, we will start with Mr. Golden. You have up to two votes.
I will vote for Mr. Connor and Mr. Worcester.
Thank you. Ms. Zaya Quinto?
This is really hard. Just want to put that out there. But I would vote for Peter Connor and Paul Worcester.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Peter Connor and Paul Worcester.
All right. Mr. Quintal?
Peter Connor and Paul Worcester.
And I will also vote for Peter Connor and Paul Worcester. So Peter Connor and Paul Worcester have been appointed. We thank them as well as Mr. Mogul for applying, and we encourage Mr. Mogul and any other applicant this evening that doesn't get appointed to reapply for future openings on the relevant board or committees they are interested in. That brings us into the Board of Health. On our agenda, we have three listed applicants. However, I have been informed that the first two, Michaela Derkindren and Charles Maitanis, have withdrawn their application and are no longer interested in pursuing a position on the Board of Health. That leaves Lorenzo Pizarro. Is, I don't, oh, I don't see Mr. Pizarro in physical attendance. Is he in virtual attendance? Yes. Mr. Pizarro, if you'd like to unmute yourself and say a few words about your interest in reappointment to the Board of Health?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank Chairman Canty, Vice Chairman Golden, Select Board members Aykinto, Quintal, and Cohen for giving me this opportunity. From, I've always sought participation in local civics throughout my life, so serving in local capacity has been a priority of mine. By serving another term on the Board of Health, I think I can provide a bit of continuity to the board. This would be my second term serving. Prior to that, I was part of a Citizens Advisory Committee that the current Chair held, so I've been interested in the Board of Health. From an experience standpoint, I work in the healthcare ecosystem, worked on the payer side for over 10 years, and most recently in hospital systems, from the University of Chicago Medicine in the Midwest to Cape Cod Healthcare currently. I completed my NPH in 2024 as trying to get my skill set and technical skills in public health. I also have an MBA from 2010. And then from my town experience, I've been a town meeting member for precinct 17. I'm currently on the Advisory and Finance Committee, and as well, I'm currently serving, trying to be reappointed to the Board of Health. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pizarro. Any questions from any board members for Mr. Pizarro? Mr. Pizarro, if you were to be reappointed, is there anything that the Board of Health is currently doing you'd like to see them continue doing, or anything that they are not doing that you'd like to see them do in your next term?
Yeah, you know, one of my final papers in my NPH was an analysis on portable housing, and it really focused on mobilizing for action through planning and partnerships, and the key word there is partnerships. I think when you think about the Board of Health as an entity within the town of Plymouth, it needs to partner with other entities and committees and the Select Board going forward. I think when you think about all oars rowing in the same time in the same place, I think you can act as a multiplier to, you know, getting your goals and objectives completed.
All right. Thank you. All right, so I'll bring it back to the board. There's, in this instance, one remaining applicant, so you will be asked if you wish to vote for that applicant. You could vote no, vote against the applicant, or you could abstain. With that in mind, Mr. Golden, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Zaya Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, for Lorenzo Pizarro.
All right. And Mr. Quintal?
Yes, Mr. Pizarro.
All right. And myself for Lorenzo Pizarro. Mr. Pizarro, you have been unanimously appointed to the Board of Health. Thank you very much. Brings us into the Capital Improvements Committee, or CIC. So we have one three-year term for a citizen at large. We have two, we have four applicants on our agenda, but Mr. Lyden and Mr. Young have withdrawn their applications. That leaves Mr. Brennan and Mr. Denish. Do we have Joseph Brennan in physical attendance? If you'd like to take the podium, say a few words about why you are interested in serving on the Capital Improvements Committee?
Good evening. My name is Joe Brennan, and I'd like to thank the Select Board for the opportunity to talk about capital expenditures this evening. I've been a resident in Plymouth for nine years. Before that, we lived in Metro West, but I grew up on the South Shore. The first 36 years of my life were on the South Shore. So upon retirement, we moved to Plymouth, and it's been great. It's like home for us. And I think the town has tremendous potential. I'd like to do my part to help it get there. And one thing I can do is share my experience, 40 years of professional experience working in the capital expenditure space. I'm an engineer by trade and have worked in that space, starting in 1978 as an entry-level engineer. And in the late 90s, I graduated up to Vice President in a major multinational corporation, also managing CapEx. In fact, I managed over $300 million of capital expenditures that ran the gamut of building, manufacturing plants, major facilities improvements, safety initiatives, infrastructure projects, and environmental initiatives. But you might ask, what does managing capital expenditures really mean? In working for a multinational corporation, I would work with stakeholders at each location, understanding the needs of those locations, helping to work up a capital expenditure justification for those projects, ranking the projects, which is very important, and then helping them get the funding from corporate funds. I also had a staff of engineers that worked closely with the locations to implement those projects. And as my employer was a capital, was a public corporation, any projects over $1 million had to be approved by the board. In over 20 years, I had 36 projects all approved by the board. The last thing I'd like to add is that I'm a big fan of multi-year capital planning. I learned through some hard knocks that going back to the well each year without a vision beyond that year is not in the best interest of the company that I worked for, and in the case of Plymouth, it would not be in the best interest, the long-term interest of the town, to be doing this one year at a time. The capital plan over five years is essential. And I would look forward to working with the Committee on Long-Range Capital Planning. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Any questions for Mr. Brennan, from members of the board? Ms. Zaya Quinto?
Just, thank you, Mr. Brennan. I was just curious if you'd had an opportunity to attend any of the Capital Improvement Commission meetings?
I did about four years ago, as an observer. So I have a sense of how they're conducted and what would be involved in going through major capital expenditures, and how that review process works. And maybe that review process could work differently, maybe not. We'll see.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Brennan, from members of the board? All right. Thank you.
Yep.
That brings us to the next applicant, Mark Denish. Is Mr. Denish in physical attendance? Is Mr. Denish in virtual attendance? He is not. All right. Well, there is one three-year term up for potential appointment. Once again, calling on members how they would wish to cast their up to one vote for that three-year term. Mr. Golden, how would you like to vote?
I'll vote for Mr. Brennan.
Thank you. Ms. Zaya Quinto?
I would also vote for Mr. Brennan.
Mr. Cohen?
Joseph Brennan.
Mr. Quintal?
Mr. Brennan.
And myself also for Mr. Brennan. It is unanimous. Congratulations to Mr. Brennan. You have been appointed to the Capital Improvements Committee. Brings us into Cemetery Commission. We have three applicants for two seats for three-year terms on the Cemetery Commission. First listed applicant is Edward Carl. Is Edward Carl in physical attendance? All right, Mr. Carl, if you'd like to take the podium, say a few words about your interest in serving on the Cemetery Commission, and then we may have questions for you.
Hi, my name's Eddie Carl. I think I stood in the same spot maybe 36 years ago, I'm not dating myself or anything, to volunteer for boards and commissions, and I ended up on the Finance Committee shortly thereafter. And I've been on a number of boards, and I see some of my friends here. Did you say there were two positions open?
There are.
Are they also here?
They might be. I don't know who your friends are.
So if, I'm actually here, but my first choice was the zoning board, which I sat on many, many years ago. I picked this as my third because I happen to be, my home is right next to the cemetery in Chiltonville. So, and some of my friends are sitting here, and I'm sure that they're up for this position. And I would defer if I would get preference in the two other boards that I have my name up for.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Carl? Ms. Zaya Quinto? Yes. Ms. Zaya Quinto has a question for you, Mr. Carl.
So, Mr. Carl, I did see that you were quite ambitious in applying for these committees, which I think is great. But you mentioned that you have a couple of other preferences. Which of those would be your top, number one?
The zoning board. I think I'm more qualified for the zoning board of the positions. I know that CPA is also, which I know that I could serve on with, if you've looked at my resume, I happen to have sat on quite a few boards and sat on quite a few projects and done a few projects, including the Loring Library, and now the Eddie Santos Garden. I'm the project manager for that, for that project. And we've taken down the trees, and we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. And other questions for Mr. Carl? All right. Mr. Daniel Holland is an applicant for reappointment. Is Mr. Holland in physical attendance? Yes. If you could take the podium and can say a few words about why you're interested in continuing to serve on the Cemetery Commission?
Good evening, members of the Select Board, ladies and gentlemen. Let me tell you a little bit about my background. I'm born and raised here in the town of Plymouth. Been 20 years as a funeral director with Cartmel Davis Funeral Homes. I'm a former mortuary officer with disaster mortuary operational response team, sorry, that's a mouthful, that was underneath FEMA, Homeland Security, and Health and Human Services, where I helped recover Hurricanes Rita, Katrina, as well as the Colgan Airline crash in Buffalo, New York. So I think with my background, I'd like to use my skills to help the Cemetery Department in the new endeavor with the growth that that is necessary to help the town of Plymouth with, you know, taking care of their deceased, which is a requirement with the state. So I'd hope to be able to stay on the board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Any questions for Mr. Holland from board members? Mr. Holland, is there anything that the Cemetery Commission is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing, or anything that they're not doing that you'd like to see them start doing if you were to be reappointed?
I currently think they're on a great direction, honestly, with the new development of the cemetery land over by Route 80. I think they're in a good position, and they're going to be a good asset for the town.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from board members? All right. Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Thank you.
That brings us to next applicant, Everett Malaguti, also an applicant for reappointment. Mr. Malaguti, if you'd like to say a few words?
Yes, Everett Malaguti. I have been a lifelong resident of Plymouth and a former long-term member of Town Meeting, as well as a current member of the Advisory and Finance Committee and a couple other committees as well, too. I have served on this committee in capacity to look at issues that were brought up years ago about the cemetery, finding adequate space, and we did a very adequate, thorough, and responsible job at doing that, at creating a new cemetery, which I believe in the very near future is going to have its groundbreaking, so that we can actually have the adequate space that's respective and deemed necessary by the state for us to bury our inhabitants. I have been very pleased at the outcome of this endeavor. It's not only, in my eyes, a beautiful aspect that's going to be coming, but it also is culturally and historically sensitive as well, too, for the neighborhood and the adjacent property across the street. And I would look forward to serving on this committee to continue, not just to support the cemetery's endeavor for respectfully and humbly asking for the preservation of the family in a peaceful manner for their last final resting place, but also to make sure that it aligns with the responsible policies, not just for the town, but also to respect anything that may come forward in the future, whether it be new technologies, or as well as just preserving the sanctity that is the final burial. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Any questions for Mr. Malaguti? Mr. Quintal?
Well done, Everett. I was wondering how you're going to follow up after that one. You did a good job after Dan. I just want to say to everybody that it's been six years since this committee was formed and started the task of finding more burial space for our townspeople. And there is a mass general laws that says that we are responsible and have to bury our townspeople. So it's been a long road. It doesn't go quite as fast as when you have your own business, you know. You all submit one part of the building, and, you know, within an hour, everybody's doing what it's supposed to. So it was a long process. I'm very happy, like you say, and we have a great committee. That committee is an awesome committee. And it's really interesting to see the way that there's natural burials, and I learned, you know, quite a bit being a liaison there. And I remember bringing it up to Mr. Tavarez during COVID time, when we were having issues with, you know, having space issues. So I'm glad we're addressing that, and we're moving along, and we should be breaking ground very soon. So thank you to you both, and the whole committee, actually.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Malaguti, is there, you sort of alluded to it a little bit in your opening, but just to give you the full opportunity, is there anything that the Cemetery Commission is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing, or anything they're not doing that you'd like to see them start doing if you were to be reappointed?
I think the Cemetery Commission is actually doing a wonderful job. In the beginning, we were struggling a little bit trying to find where we were going. Either was it just regulations to find new cemetery space, and I think we found a very solid footing that both represents what the Select Board has wanted us to do and tasked us in doing, but also respected the outcome of not just all the other service industries that... all the other service industries that the cemetery lies on, but also the residents as well, too, to make sure that everything is done respectfully, not just for the town staff and town finances, but also respectfully for their own selves and their own families to make sure that they are 100% comforted and supported throughout the entire endeavor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. All right, so we have heard from all the applicants. There are two three-year terms. We'll turn it over to, starting with Mr. Golden, as to how he would like to cast up to two votes for those three-year terms. Mr. Golden?
I'm so happy. I'm on the board.
Mr. Holland and Mr. Malaguti. All right. Ms. Iacquinto?
Mr. Holland and Mr. Malaguti.
Mr. Cohen?
Everett Malaguti and Daniel Holland.
And Mr. Quintal?
Daniel Holland and Everett Malaguti.
And myself for Daniel Holland and Everett Malaguti. So, congratulations to Daniel Holland, Everett Malaguti, and thank you to Mr. Carl. We have appointed the members of the Cemetery Commission. Brings us into the next, which is the Center for Active Living Advisory Board. There are three three-year terms. We have seven, seven applicants. First-listed applicant is Richard Bond Jr. Mr. Bond, if you'd like to take the podium, say a few words about why you're interested in serving on the Center for Active Living Advisory Board, and then we may have questions for you from board members.
First of all, thank you for your consideration of my application. And I think I'm going to be saying some things about the Center for Active Living, and the number of applicants you have for three slots indicates the value this program has to the town of Plymouth, and I really respect that very much. My name's Richard Bond. I've been a Plymouth resident for eight years. And shortly after moving here, I immediately got involved with the Center for Active Living, having been a professional social worker for the past forty-plus years. And my experience professionally has been working closely with a number of councils on aging, both here in Massachusetts and nationally, and appreciating the services that they provide. I think in working as a social worker, we had a buzz phrase that we used to use with services to the aged, and that is, you need to plan to serve the risky, the frisky, and the frail. And let me start with the frisky. They're the ones that, you know, they don't pose many challenges for communication. You don't need to push information out or pull them in. They're hit there, they walk in, and they say, "What have you got for me?" And there are lots of programs at Cal for those individuals. Your frail are individuals who need special assistance. They're often identified by members of the public, by family members, and by professionals. And there, you need to cater services that can meet special needs in most cases. And then you've got what I consider the largest group, and that is the risky. These are individuals who are moving on in the development of their life. And as I have reached my seventh decade, I realize that those challenges start to get more challenging, and often can confront you with situations you haven't confronted before. And that's where services that the Cal and the Center for Active Living can be very valuable in the sense that meeting their needs proactively can often eliminate more severe needs that may come their way. And as a professional social worker, I have seen that happen in action. In my involvement with Cal, in different programs that I've participated in, I see that, again, town of Plymouth has a gem of a program, and the challenges are going to continue as we go. And I'd like to, perhaps, you know, very much would like to help in that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bond. Any questions for Mr. Bond from members of the board? Ms. Iacquinto?
Thank you, Mr. Bond. I love your characterization of the populations that, that an organization like Cal serves. I wrote that down, I'm going to steal that if that's okay with you. But it sounds like you might have some ideas for how to better reach some of these populations?
Well, I think my observation has been that communication is, is vital. People who know the information about what Cal offers are more likely to use them. I think some of your supportive programs, and I know one of the applicants is a former police officer, and I think that your public service and other town officials very much need to know what's going on, be able to communicate that. I also see that the town can use very much the audience that Cal attracts. I've been to a number of the meetings where members of the Fire Department or the Police Department, the Planning Board just gave a presentation, and it's a chance for Cal to be a meeting place for people to hear and, you know, give and take back and forth. So, yeah, I see that as a big potential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Just building on that, as a, as a social worker, so you have experience reaching out to connecting individuals to services within the community?
Yes, yes.
And how have you seen that conducted at Cal right now? How is it being done now?
Well, I think that the education, I think I mentioned in my bio, the concept of family, family life education. So, you have education on, you know, how to communicate with family members around difficult topics, as an example. You have situations of educating people on how to avoid falls, things like that. And these, these are programs that can attract people in, in addition to just having interesting, entertaining types of activities, art, you know, storytelling, band concerts, things like that. You know, these are, it, in a way, it's a social club as well as a social service. And I think those are, that's a key balance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none, thank you, Mr. Bond. Next-listed applicant is Janice Capafredi. Is Ms. Capafredi in physical attendance? Is Ms. Capafredi in virtual attendance? She is. All right. If she wants to, brought in and unmute herself?
Yes, thank you.
You're very-
Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Capafredi, we can, we can't really-
Can you hear me okay?
If you could speak a little clearer and closer to your mic, it's challenging. Will you turn the volume up? But, okay.
How's that? A little better?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm currently on the board, the Advisory Board, and my position has been, or the position I've been fulfilling there, is Board Secretary. And the responsibilities of the Board Secretary is to take care of various administrative functions, keeping all the minutes, agendas, making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And the requirements for this role include a good grasp of the English language, knowledge of Word and Excel, and being able to scan documents in, et cetera. And those are things that I do well. My commitment to the Cal started a number of years ago, as I participated in a lot of the programs that were there, and they're wonderful. And in addition to that, I am now a caregiver, and it has been invaluable. The Cal has been wonderful, so supportive, and has done so many presentations, updates, so many resources are available. So, I've just been so happy to have been on this board, and so that is the reason why I'm seeking to stay on it for another three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from any board members? Ms. Capafredi, if you were to be reappointed, is there anything that the Cal Advisory Board is currently doing you'd like to see them do, or anything that they're not doing that you would like to see them undertake during your next term?
I think that considering the financial considerations that are always facing us, that they are doing an enormous amount for the people of Plymouth currently. So, I think that, you know, if they can continue to do what they've been doing, it would be delightful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, thank you very much. That brings us to the next applicant, Valerie Cormier. Yeah, okay, if you'd like to take the podium, I may have butchered the pronunciation of your last name, and if I did, I apologize.
French-Canadian.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for having me here. I mean, I, too, am impressed with all the applications that you have for this committee. It's very impressive. And I have to say, I've been a resident of Plymouth for twenty-eight years now. I raised my son here. He's graduated and since moved across the entire country to Portland, Oregon. So, my entire family also resides here in Plymouth. All of my siblings are here. Three years ago, I stopped commuting to Boston for my job, which is in human resources and hospitality, and I decided that I wanted to find a job here locally so that I wouldn't spend hours of my day traveling in that, in that, on those streets, in that traffic. I found a local job here in Plymouth, the one and only Marbo and Spa, which is the only luxury hotel here in Plymouth. And I've been the HR manager there now for three years. Since then, I have found time, a little bit of additional time, that I can now use to serve my community, and I feel like I'm at that point in my life where I'd like to do that. I think this particular appointment, the Cal appointment, is so intriguing to me, not just because I, too, am getting older, and I've never attended, I've never been there. However, my family is also older, and I noticed that the employees at Marbo are also getting older. So, I feel like this is, and people are living a lot longer now, so I think there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity for that underserved community that I can help with. In terms of my HR profession, I'm comfortable designing and implementing services to connect people. That's something that I do every single day. Also, my understanding of federal, state, and local regulations will also, I think, be very helpful to the board. I think being able to support friends, family, coworkers, neighbors in my community where I tend to retire is very important, and I'm very passionate about really helping the community. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicants? Yes, Mr. Cohen?
So, your experience in the industry of hospitality, how do you feel as if that might be helpful to the visitors and the, in the clientele that comes through there? But your thoughts on how could you, you know, proactively engage them on that?
Well, I think being an active listener, I think not only in hospitality, but in most places, when you're a leader in a, in any type of job, you have to be an active listener. I think empathy is important, too, and I think I have that in abundance. So, I'm able to understand and sympathize with people very easily. I think those are the two main things that would, would help me in this particular situation.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next listed applicant is Teresa Cruz Sullivan. Is Ms. Cruz Sullivan in physical attendance? Is she in virtual attendance? We are not joined by Ms. Cruz Sullivan. The next listed applicant is Kevin Manuel.
Evening, Mr. Chair and Select Board members. I just want to say that I, too, am very impressed with a number of applicants for this. That tells me that we, as the current Cal Advisory Board, has been doing something right to get a lot of attention of the town members. One of the things I go over really quickly is, Mr. Bond had said that communication's the number-one thing, a huge thing to get it out there. And I just want to point out that Terry Acorn, Patty Acorn in the back, Kevin Hood, members that are on the senior Voices Subcommittee of this, we do go out into the community. We do meet seniors, get the word out about what the Cal is, the services that we offer. These are things that absolutely needs to happen and currently are. Very proud of some of the work that Pat and Kevin and I have been doing, along with Terry. Let me just get into a little bit about who I am. I've been a police officer for twenty-five years here in the town of Plymouth, been a captain for seven years. Seven years ago, when I made captain, I was appointed as a liaison to the Cal for the Police Department, something that I really enjoyed, something that I've tried to hang on to, and I still am. I ended up working with them, and as I'm working with them, I see the great work that they're doing. And then as my father aged, and he's going through, and he had needs, the work that the social outwork, social outreach workers there. Back when Michelle Braddy was one of the social outreach workers, April Thompson, they do really good work. And I love being able to work with them, help them through it. In my line of work, I get to see the frontline, the people that actually, the frail people that are out there that do need the help. And I kind of, I enjoy the aspect of bringing the opportunities that Cal has and bringing it out there. So, I, a lot of times, I personally go out with the outreach coordinators, the people that need the help, go out to the houses, and also, a lot of times, referrals. It goes both ways. They, they look for my help to come out with them, and a lot of times, we run into people, what seems like an absolutely normal routine call that we have, could be somebody else's worst day. And so, you take the time, and you can bring in the social outwork, a social worker from Cal, and sometimes move it up to the old colony, bring them out there. So, one of the things is, that's what I love doing, I enjoy doing. It was something that, like I said, I started off as just being the liaison, but then as I saw the work, all the extra work that they did with my father, it's something that I want to be part of that team, and I want to continue it. Mr. Chair, you're going to ask me about what I think that they're doing right or wrong? One of the things that I see, and this is, again, from my personal experiences, I end up by taking my father's license, transportation. Transportation is a huge issue in town. It's so big. Cal has so many services at that building, but so many people can't get there. So, one of the things I've seen is a couple different programs that they've started up to get some of the seniors into the building for services. And also, there's a couple other things that they've started up to get them to appointments and stuff like that. I think they're doing it right, and I'd love to continue working towards more public transportation-type stuff for seniors.
All right. Thank you for anticipating my question. All right. Any other questions? Mr. Cohen?
So, as a liaison, do you continue that? Are you currently the liaison?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and you'd like to serve on the board. Your observation as a liaison in, in the board, the difference of impact that one could have?
I'm not understanding, there's two different positions. Like, this is advisory. The liaison is to the actual day-to-day stuff between the Police Department and Cal. So, it's kind of two different positions. Currently, my position for the, within the Police Department, it's one, one of my duties. Is there a question about that? Is there a question about that?
So, yeah, that helps me understand what the liaison position. So your interaction with the Cal is limited to those responsibilities that the Police Department has? You're not participating or spending time there or serving on different aspects? You're just the guy they contact?
No, I actually do spend time over there. It started off as just kind of the contact, if they have any questions, and I help out. Back pre-COVID, Michelle Braddy and I were able to set up the coffee with a cop, where we ended up by bringing all the, bringing some police officers and seniors in to sit down and have coffee with us, sit down and talk. So things like that. I do show up at different events. I try and create access. A lot of times, seniors don't have access to police officers, and a lot of seniors are afraid, I don't want to bother the police, I don't want to call. So a lot of times, just being around, I can answer questions for them. And that happens a lot also in my position as the, part of the Advisory Board, going out with senior voices. A lot of seniors, they, they don't want to bother anybody. So they don't want to, it's not even like calling 911, it's not even calling 911, it's the regular business line, they don't want to bother us. So it's kind of nice to be able to get out there, to have those interactions with seniors, to be able to answer any, some small questions, sometimes explaining about the scams. We go out into the, into the community, and a lot of our seniors are being targeted for scams. So we, the last time that we went out was up to Sawyer Reach. We had 40, 50 people show up to that. I brought one of my detectives with us, and he kind of went over some of the recent scams, let them know so they can be aware of it. And if something does happen, you do get caught, like, explain exactly how to deal with it. I hope that kind of answered the question.
Yes, and then some. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Other questions for the applicant who's up for reappointment? All right. Thank you very much, Captain Manuel. That brings us to the next listed applicant, Gabriel Pacey?
Pachi.
Pachi, my apologies.
Good evening. Thank you for entertaining my application. Give a little bit of my professional background. I've been senior executive in leadership positions in a number of companies. Ever since, I think I can remember, I've been a volunteer. I've always enjoyed volunteering in a number of programs, whether it's a sports program, soccer, Business Environmental Network, excuse me. And I retired about 16 years ago. I decided I want to do even more. So I've been serving in a number of boards and committees, some, actually, mostly Massachusetts, some in New Hampshire as well. I enjoy partly the giving back part, I mean, it's fun for me. I have a passion for youth mental health and suicide prevention, and an advisory board that deals with those issues. And also, seniors living a more active life is important. By definition, what I see on the net these days, I'm a superager. At my age, I'm 81 years old, I just won a 5K race for 70s and above, excellent mental health, excellent physical health, excellent emotional health. How do we get seniors at that level, you know, to get there more? Provide programs that can assist in getting to that point. It's, I think, youth, mental health, and seniors are probably two of the most, that need the most help in our society. I want to do more. I want to be part of that solution. I am a senior, obviously, at my age, and I still serve in a number of committees and boards as well. I live at Red Brook, Young Two Committees there. Staying active, staying socially engaged is extremely, extremely important. We're talking about dementia issues, Alzheimer's are great, I mean, it's going to consume this country as more and more elderly, as we live longer, so. Thank you. And by the way, I want to congratulate other applicants, amazing group of applicants, wow. It's really good. You're very lucky to have so many apply for these positions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Ms. Iaquinto has a question? Yes.
Don't go away yet. Well, your background is pretty impressive, too.
Sorry?
I said, your background is pretty impressive, too. I was just wondering if you had had an opportunity to attend any of the Cal Advisory meetings?
So, I've been at the center?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been there several times. I actually participated in a, it was a middle school program, students, something called the Tulip Program to do mental health, and I met with some of the students there. And given my background in working in mental health organizations, was able to answer questions and kind of engage with the students. It was great, really enjoyed it, so. Yeah, I've been to the center several times, seen some of their programs. I subscribe, I see the list every month, and it's amazing. It's a great program. What I can do, hopefully, is to help assist, I mean, in improving some of the programs, maybe bring in more. I believe in volunteerism, and if we can get more volunteers in the community that serve, we talked about transportation, let's find volunteers that can drive some of the seniors to the center and back. There's a lot of ways that volunteers can help in that endeavor, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
So, your experience in nonprofits, in working this number of them, what was the highlight of your nonprofit in your capacity as a volunteer?
Sure.
Were you working for these nonprofits as a volunteer, or were you employed by them?
All volunteer. So I served as chair of the Elliot Community Human Services, a large mental health organization in the state. We have 130 facilities in Massachusetts that deal in mental health, both youth, families, and seniors, and adults. That's been, I was 16 years on that board, and I totally enjoyed it. I really believe that comes a time when you really have to step back and just lead a younger group, younger generation. I've mentored the present CEO. So it's, use your experience to help others, to mentor others, but at the same time, understand when it's time to go, and I, you know, it was time, I said, that's enough of that. Then End Project, Youth Suicide Prevention, the founder of that, daughter committed suicide at 23 years of age, formed this group, they're actually part of Elliot, serve on their Advisory Board, and that's exciting. We use peer mentors to go through a lot of high schools all over the state, and now down to middle schools, because I think kids have issues at a younger age than low school. And these peer mentors are individuals who have actually had problems, both physical, mental, sexual abuse, and they've come out of it, and they tell their stories one class at a time. I've been, participated. I'll tell you one other thing, I am an active board member. I do not come to meetings and just sit. I want to be out in the field, I want to talk to the clients, understand their needs, and see how best we can help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. That brings us to the last listed applicant, Michael Vance. Are we joined in person by Mr. Vance? Thank you. Want to come to the podium and introduce yourself, Mr. Vance? Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for this process, because I've learned more in the last hour and a half than in the last few years I've been in Plymouth. I want to make it a little bit easier, I will withdraw formally. I believe in volunteerism, I believe in everything that's going on. But I also, I went by Cal today, and I know that I can volunteer, and I can participate. And I think there's some great folks that obviously are very serious, as well as myself. And I am up for another committee. I will hang around for that.
Okay.
But I want to make your voting just a little bit easier, and I will continue to be a resource for Cal, as well as the senior community within Plymouth.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vance. We appreciate that. All right. So that leaves us with six applicants in contention for one of the three three-year terms that are available. So I will go again by member, ask which of the, which individuals you would like to vote for, for up to three of these positions. Again, you can choose to vote no or abstain if you would like, but procedurally, just to review. So, Mr. Golden, with that in mind, you have up to three votes.
I'll vote for Mr. Bond, Ms. Capafredi, and Mr. Manuel.
Thank you. Ms. Iaquinto?
And I will vote for Richard Bond, Janice Capafredi, and Kevin Manuel.
Mr. Cohen?
I'll vote for Richard Bond and Kevin Manuel.
Okay.
And I have a third vote.
You do.
And I am going to vote for Valerie Cormier.
Okay. Mr. Quintal?
Janice Capafredi, Kevin Manuel, and Gabriel Pacey?
All right. And I will vote for Richard Bond, Janice Capafredi, and Kevin Manuel. So, Richard Bond has five votes, so that is one appointment. Janice Capafredi has three votes, that is another appointment. And Kevin Manuel has five votes. So those are the three individuals that were appointed, but as was said, not only by us, but by the applicants themselves, who was an impressive field of candidates. Many of these boards have an impressive field of candidates, but this one had a particularly impressive, even within that pedigree. So thank you all for applying. Future openings may occur, and we would encourage anyone that did not get appointed to reapply in the future. So thank you all. That brings us into the Community Preservation Committee. We have one three-year term, we have three applicants. The first applicant is an applicant for reappointment. That applicant is Karen Buks. Ms. Buks, if you'd like to take the podium, say a few words about your interest in reappointment to the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm seeking reappointment to this committee. I've lived in Plymouth 52 years, brought my children up here. I believe in volunteerism. I started 20 years ago as a town meeting member, became chair, served on a, two commissions, charter commissions, three charter reviews, and many, many committees. But I will tell you, the CPC is a wonderful committee, and I enjoy it very much. It's my very favorite, because I see it as bringing a wonderful quality of life to people. We've done many, many wonderful things. Stevens Field, family-oriented, the Spire Center, can't ask for more. Pilgrim Hall Museum, it's a jewel downtown, and that little piece of property off of Rocky Hill Road, that was a gem. It opens up to a vista on Plymouth Bay, and because we acquired that property, the federal government gave us $3.6 million for additional paths and trails. So I'm very proud to sit on this committee, and it's, it's been a pleasure.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Buks. Any questions for Ms. Buks? Mr. Cohen?
Karen Buks, you've served on a number of committees, as you've indicated, in the capacity, what skills do you think you bring? You've obviously served town meeting in numerous boards and committees, and what are those, what have you learned through those committees that are helpful to the CPC?
Well, first of all, you have to be able to listen, you have to know how the town runs. It's very important to know that, the mechanics of the town. But I've sat on the Capitol, I think they call it Improvement Committee now, it was the Capitol Outlay, Understanding Finances. But a great joy was being a town meeting member, working with the community and town meeting members, being a chair and seeing that through. It's just, I like to help people. That's what I've always done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Buks? Ms. Iaquinto?
Hi, Mrs. Buks. Thank you so much for your presentation. And the CPC is, as you said, very important committee. What do you see as the primary opportunity for the CPC in the next three years if you were reappointed? What would you like to see them focus on?
Well, yes, affordable housing, and I'm sure you, maybe you do remember, I don't know, you weren't a selectman at the time, but the Red Brook Village came in. I regard that as the platinum standard for affordable housing. And that's what we need, especially in this town. But if you asked me to separate what I like best, it is the thing that comes before me at the time, and it would be like separating my children, I can't do it. So when I tell you I enjoy this committee very much, and we're very focused now on the taxpayer, because we have 11 million, 11 million seven promised out to various entities, and we're, our debt, we're working on our debt, so, but thank you for that question.
Thank you.
So I'll ask my sort of standard question for reappointment, so you sort of answered it to an extent, but is there anything, Ms. Buks, that if you were reappointed, that you, that the CPC is currently doing, that you'd like to see them continue to do, or anything that you'd like to see them take up or start doing that they're not doing at present?
Well, we're a pretty tight committee, we work well together, but recently, we changed the application form to be more concise and clearer when people fill it out, and I think that, that's helped a lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the next applicant, Edward Carl. Mr. Carl, if you'd like to retake the podium, this time explaining why you're interested in the Community Preservation Committee, although you did give us a bit of a preview earlier, but nevertheless.
Thanks so much for taking the time, and I've been, I've lived in this town since 1987, and I first came to be a volunteer through interviews just like this. My experiences in the town of Plymouth, Finance Committee to the Board of Voting Registries, and several years in different committees in my younger days. And then my family got busy, and I moved on. But I've been a volunteer for a very, very long time, did a lot with Zion Lutheran Church and the Lauren Library, it was a huge project back in 2005. I understand the importance of preserving places like that. We took that as a small church, brought that piece of, you know, we got that piece of property that laid at the end of Boundary Street for many, many years. We fought really hard for funds to get that building preserved. And I know how hard it is to do these projects. And that church bore a big, you know, we had a $1.6 million mortgage on that, on the church building, just to pay off what it took to do the almost $2 million project. So I understand the importance in the preservation. We preserved a piece of property or a building that was just going to lay fallow, because the Walmart company had taken that away. And Walmart helped us a little bit when we, when we put that in. So I understand the importance, and I moved to this town because I think there is an opportunity, it's a beautiful town. And I've lived in two or three different spots in town, and now I happen to live on River Street. I have a beautiful piece of property there, I was lucky enough to buy and build a beautiful home. And I want to continue my volunteerism. 27 years as a Boy Scout leader in the town of Duxbury for Troop 62, helped a lot of kids through community service. So I understand the importance of being on these communities, these committees, and having different perspectives, and seeing different- and having different perspectives and seeing different things in life. And actually, I just retired today from my, my second retirement as a vocational high school teacher from Old Colony Vocational High School. I had ten years previous at Social Vote Tech. I am a master electrician by trade. I had a business for a very, very long time. At fifty years old, I became a teacher over in Southeastern Regional Tech. So I taught in three different vocational schools. I'm a contractor, longtime contractor. And I found enough time to be able to volunteer and do a lot of different projects over time. And now that I'm retired, I want to give, I want to give a little bit more back because I got, I got some more to give. So that's why I expressed interest in this committee. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from board members for Mr. Carl? Mr. Cohen?
So with the Community Preservation Act, you have housing historical, you have open space, you have a subcomponent of recreational that's part of the CPA. From your experience in serving on boards and committees in your work experience in your communities, whether it was education, how do you see those three competing elements in terms of the skill set that you bring to it? Because you would be looking at an application process where you have to, you know, consider all three, housing, historical, and open space.
Well, you know, and we do understand that this is one of the largest towns around, 106 square miles. There's a lot of stuff going on here and a lot of construction projects that have gone on. Well, the three of them have to coexist here, and we have to, we have to provide housing for folks. And I know that's a tough one. This is a town that, you know, when I moved here, you could buy a house. Today, it's not quite as easy. And the taxes are also, you know, from my experience of thirty-six years plus, it's not the easiest place to live, you know, if you're just, if you're just making a living wage. So we do have to find ways to address that. There are tons and tons of trails in this town. And we have, we're lucky enough to have the state forest, there are a couple of Boy Scout camps out there. So I know the forest pretty well. And that's probably underutilized as trails. But there are so many different trails that I think a lot of people don't even understand what we have. I think there was a book a couple of years, a couple of years ago that, you know, and we have 360 ponds or lakes or water bodies in this town. So there's a lot going on here, and there's a lot that we can do with the money that we get from the tax revenues that go into this front.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Carl? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the next listed applicant, Craig Sander.
I forgot my. Hello. Thank you very much for having me here. Appreciate the invitation. My name is Craig Sander. I live in the Town of Plymouth on Middle Street with my wife and two children. I've been active on town committees and boards. I was on the Charter Review Committee with Mr. Chairman. COVID kind of derailed everything, and I really wasn't able to be as involved. But I received an email for soliciting volunteer opportunities, and I opened it up, saw that there was an opening on the Preservation Committee and on the Historic District Committee, and figured, let's give it a shot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sander. Any questions for Mr. Sander? Yes, Ms. Iya Quinto?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. So what is it about the Community Preservation Committee that intrigued you?
Well, I think it's impactful. I think that I'm a resident of downtown. I remember attending the Russell Street presentation that Mr. Cohen gave about the Stevens Field project that was, seemed forever away, that is now beautifully complete. I think that being able to volunteer in an impactful way like this is a great opportunity and a duty. I served on the board of the Plymouth Antique Society and the First Parish Meeting House. So I've seen the impact that CPC money has on very meaningful community improvement projects. I think that I bring a financial perspective that can be useful when CPC is considering bond issuances and long-term financial planning. I'm familiar with municipal finance and think that I can bring some expertise there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Sander? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the vote for this particular appointment. So we have three applicants for one three-year term. Again, I will call on members to see what vote they would like to cast. Mr. Golden, how would you like to cast your one vote?
I will vote for Ms. Buks.
Thank you. Ms. Iya Quinto?
I will also vote for Karen Buks.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
I will also vote for Karen Buks.
Mr. Quinto?
Karen Buks.
And myself also for Karen Buks. So thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to Ms. Buks, and we do appreciate the interest of the other applicants as well. So that brings us to the Conservation Commission. We have three three-year terms. We have four listed applicants. The first is Sean Anderson, who is an applicant for reappointment. He is coming to the podium. Say a few words about yourself and your level of interest, and we may have questions.
Great. Good evening. Sean Anderson, your current chair, Plymouth resident fourteen, eighteen years. So I can give a quick, I guess, use this opportunity to kind of give a quick, where the CONCOM is today and how we got here. It's real short, I know it's getting late. So my concern as the current chair is really, and this might be for all the commissions, is really the high turnover rate that we've had. So I was here three years ago, appointed at that time. We had three empty seats, and one member was not reappointed. So four seats three years ago for a seven-member committee. Of those four, only three are still on it. Two are here tonight for reappointment. One member made it about a year, and he was resigned or potentially was going to get removed. That's where I became the chair. Of that original commission, the three left, those three members are no longer with us either. All three left within the two years after that for family reasons or just life events, right? So the common theme was either getting removed for a couple or the workload of the commission. This seems to be a really robust, heavy workload for a commission. Over the past year, these aren't firm stats, but this is a quick job, what I did, so public math. We've had thirty-eight meetings with 231 votes, which required 231 site visits across the entire Town of Plymouth over the course of the year. Typically, we'd have a lot more meetings than that thirty that we had. But over that past year, we tailed it down to go and every three weeks have a week off. So we're really trying to see what's our real workload as a commission, trying to better utilize our time. We finally went to an in-person meeting, which got us to an OML violation in the State AG. Wasn't really a violation, but the town said, hey, we're not going to waste taxpayer dollars to fight this. Essentially, we went to a room that was too small. They said, we didn't, we kicked people out. It never happened. I wasn't even there. But it doesn't matter. We went to, now we're fully, finally, September 10th, we're now fully hybrid. And we are starting this week to go every other week. So hopefully, the workload, it's not going to shrink for full-time staff, but for commissioners coming in every week, week after week after week. Hopefully, that'll help the burden a little bit. Another piece of this was the town meeting article. So that was one of the big ones. I'll just, I won't mention all of them. But that was a big one that we had, Town Meeting Article for the Veronal Pools. One of the meetings, it was realized that our town rules and regulations were actually, were in line with the town bylaw. So we had to go to town meeting to get legally in line. It had been there for a few decades and was finally caught and realized, so we did the right thing there. For me, if reappointed and reappointed as chair, I will open it up the next meeting to, you know, for votes, if anyone wants to be chair, please go for it. I have no problem stepping back. But for me, I think could be working with our full-time staff and town manager, trying to get a hold of some of these gross negligent violations that we're now starting to see. There's a lot of minor ones that just, some people just don't realize what's going on. Hey, I didn't realize I couldn't do this, couldn't do that. Let's fix it. Now we're starting to see potential repeat and very excessive repeat offenders that I think need a little more elevation. I know some of them are going through the process and litigation, so I know that's a whole nother ballgame. I think it's probably one of the highlights I think the commission will take to the town manager, I think, this year as we kind of peck away at one thing a year. So, that, real questions?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Mr. Quinto?
I'm only going to ask this because I don't know the answer, naturally. Sand removal.
Yes.
Have you made decisions on these, some of these cases, Seventy-One Hedges Pond Road?
So that was only brought to us because of, so that particular one was brought to us because of vegetated wetland in the area that could be potentially, it's a small one, I said it could be replicated. So that one did come in front of us. We voted unanimously, I believe it was unanimously, to go ahead with the project. They would not receive us.
So you voted, so the Conservation Committee voted unanimously?
I believe it was unanimous, if I remember correctly. Yes. And for that project to be successful, in order to come back to the commission for certificate compliance, they have to replicate that wetland, or they will never get a certificate of compliance. That project will be on, in limbo for that particular scenario. One thing that was brought up during that meeting, which was, I thought was interesting from a member on the commission, was if we voted no, they could have very easily have just gone 41B apparently and bypassed us entirely. So at least it's kept it regulated, if you will.
Thank you very much. And is there any evidence, have anyone ever done any research into sand removal hurting the aquifer? Because I'm hearing different things, but I hear that it doesn't. So being an elected official, I'd really like to know if we've looked at that.
Yes. Nope, just outside of the reports that are out there. And it's, you know, I think you have to be careful with some of these reports because obviously you have two sides politic in each side of it. And obviously, they're going to have firms that are going to frame things into their, so it's, you know, what's the true, what's the two sides behind it? You know, I, you know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Ms. Iya Quinto?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I know that the commission deals with a lot of very challenging issues. So thank you for the explanation of what it's been like there for the past few years. I'm just curious, why are you interested in staying on for another three years?
So this one was interesting, yeah. So I am one of the ones that first came on three years ago. I am a violation offender myself, right? I knew of the Conservation Commission, I bought a house that was zoned for to put a bridge activity. So I went into the town bylaw, looked for wetland, I looked for Conservation Commission. I was like, okay, I can do this, 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 this. Perfect. Boom, done. So I didn't go to the wetland, brought some filler in the backyard and redid some grass. Come to find out, you know, Mr. Baca comes on over and, what are you doing? And then, well behold, they actually go to the commission site and there's rules and regulations. And, you know, so I was really in-depth into it. So it really got me interested in, you know, I love learning things. So why, I'm like, why did you tell me no? Like, how did we get to yes, right? So that's kind of, you know, I didn't fight it, obviously, I did the right thing. And I think a lot of people are in that same situation. So when you go to these projects and it's a violation, it's, I think it's comforting to say, hey, was it your scenario before? Trust me. Can't say what you can do, but you have to hire someone. And there should be a way to yes, right? Is there a means to yes if it wasn't, you know? So I'm fully on that aspect of, someone's going to satisfy, is there a common ground? Yes, it's legal, ethical, and moral. Part of it is too, I mean, it's interesting that over the three years, going, just going around town, the amount of times I've gone to, whether it's, you know, the Thirsty Pilgrim out in Browns Bank, the amount of people that just say, hey, thank you for the great work we did, you know how hard you are, this. I'm like, I know how hard you are, but thank you. It's nice. And I've been a federal servant for twenty-seven-plus years, just retired from the military. So it's, how do I now serve my local community? And that's where I am now.
All right. Mr. Cohen?
You indicated a little earlier that there was something that, that the petitioner at Hedges Pond could have disregarded?
Yes.
So could you elaborate on that?
So this is something, I don't know factually perspective, but I guess the way zoning works and everything else, so outside of our jurisdiction. The only reason why they were in front of us was because the type of development that was going in. If it would have been a 40B housing, they didn't need to come in front of us because they would have been outside of that wetland resource area, the way they were replicating or building. So they could have easily said, okay, we're going to scrap this project. Now we're going to create a project that's outside your scope and jurisdiction, the hundred-foot buffer that's going to be over here, and we're really going to disrupt everything. So that was an interesting aspect to it.
So what you were talking about, what triggers the Wetlands Protection Act?
Three Ten CMR.
Right. So they would avoid that.
And not just avoid that, and then our more restrictive town rules and regulations. So we're a lot more restrictive than the Three Ten CMR from the state.
Right, right. So I just wanted to hear your interpretation of that. But obviously, what you noted is that they can't, you know, disregard the Wetlands Protection Act.
Correct.
That's paramount. But you're saying that in this instance, they could have just, you know, they could have complied, stayed away a hundred feet away from it and done something else.
Yes.
Which would have then not put you in the room.
Correct.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Is there anything that the CONCOM is currently doing that you'd like to see them do or anything that they're not doing that you'd like to see them do if you were to be reappointed?
No, I think that this commission's on a, set a great path forward, and we've got a great team working there. One of the, the more recent one, I know Maury's in the room, helping out with the, he's a huge resource, obviously, his background. With the plants, we all, you know, every time we get a project, it's always, hey, let's do native plants, native plants, New England native plants. Well, Plymouth is not native to Vermont plants and this and that. So now's a new list that we just voted on. Do you have to make, invent a reel? Cape Cod Commission has a great list. I think there's a lot of great collaboration going within the commission right now. It's not stovepipes, a lot of, how do we make things better right now? So.
All right.
And nothing really pinpoint specific, other than I think the violation's going to be the big key one for this next year. If we had to pick a big topic.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. So that, the next applicant listed is Paul Churchill, also an applicant for reappointment. Churchill, if you'd like to introduce yourself and say a few words about why you're interested in continuing to serve.
Hi, my name's Paul Churchill. I'm hoping the board would consider my, to reappoint me for another three-year term. I served out this term. It ends now in full. We have a, what I think is a pretty good balance on the commission now. Sean works very well. Like you said, Maury brings a lot to the table. I have a, I was born and raised in Plymouth. I do have a local knowledge of a lot of the areas. I obviously care about them. I have every intention of staying here. So I think the board has a really good balance, the way it's set now. Everybody brings something to the table. Everybody brings something a little different. Sean, who's the chair now, is very analytical, as you can probably see from his reading off. Maury has his plant expertise. I think I bring a little bit of a, get it done, and how can we get this done with the taxpayer being fairly, you know, his rights being represented? And not create an undue burden to him when there is no effectual result on the environment other than because the rules say so. If it's something that this person would benefit the house, I don't think that just because we can say no, we should say no. And, you know, I believe very strongly that way. And I hope you'll consider my reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. Churchill. Any questions for Mr. Churchill? Ms. Iya Quinto?
Thank you very much, Paul. I'm just curious, could you give an example of the, of what you just said? If you can, if we, just because we can't say no, we don't necessarily need to. So what would be an example of that?
Well, the wetlands rules, you know, we have purview in the hundred-foot zone. So a lot of people read that. They will come to us and say, you're letting, if a person's trying to build a wooden deck, there's absolutely no leach, nothing to do with a septic. It's a wooden deck so they can enjoy the pond that they pay a lot of money in taxes for. And they moved this pond because, for the reasons that they want to enjoy it. I don't think we should be, we should be telling them no as long as, you know, it's not going to affect the pond. Other people are of the opinion, no, at a hundred- Other people are of the opinion, no, at 100 feet, we can say no. So we're going to say no. I don't, I don't believe that to be the case. But there is balance in the board. There are people who feel, I don't, I don't think any of the board feels exactly that way to always say no. People lean that way. I happen to lean the other way and say, how can we help this person out? If you're going to say no to them, what are the negative effects instead of just saying no? That, that, that's what I'm very largely against.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Paul Churchill.
Yep.
The board works together, there's different opinions. Sometimes when you do approve something, you have your orders of condition. Do you see that as an opportunity to effectuate that, that balance that you're looking at? How do you approach the orders of condition?
Yes, absolutely. You know, the, you know, they'll, they'll come in, if, if it really is a project that looks like a tree does need to be cut down, in most cases, if it's within our zone, Maury, who brings a lot of knowledge to the table, because he's an expert in that sort of thing, will say, oh, a couple of these trees would be great there. And most people that come in, they understand that in that area, if it's within the 100 feet, they should give a little. They're, they're taking down a tree, they can go and they can plant some blueberry bushes. And, and that's usually what we do in the orders of conditions, is have them give back a little bit for what they're taking.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. Churchill, if you were to be reappointed, is there anything that the commission is currently doing you'd like to see them continue doing, or anything they're not doing you'd like to see them start doing?
No, I think, I honestly think it works, like I said, I've been on my full three years. I would say it's working, things can always get better, but I would say it's working much more efficiently than it was before, except for staff's end, which has to do with people's sicknesses and we don't, you know, we haven't had a, I think in the last two meetings, we haven't had a staff agent there. But those are town end meetings, as far as the board goes, I think it's working very well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the next applicant, who was not present earlier, but may be present now. So I'll see. Is Mark Denish in physical attendance? Is Mark Denish in virtual attendance? He is not. All right. That brings us to the next listed applicant, Paul Denoncourt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Board of Directors, the Board of Selectmen, people. You might remember me from-
You're very hard to hear, to be honest, so if you could just speak closer to the mic.
Okay. I've been told that before in a soft voice. You might remember me from a year ago, when you appointed me to complete the last year of another commissioner's term. So I'm here again now to seek reappointment to my own three-year term. The year I've spent on the commission has been very educational. It was amazing to me how much, how great a learning curve there is to get on the, the commission. One, a commissioner needs to be familiar with the state's Wetland Protection Act, the town's Chapter 196 bylaws on conservation, conservation rules and regulations. And I've embraced that wholeheartedly. On top of that, there's also the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners, who have a handbook that I've devoured. I've attended several, many of their seminars, enough that I have become certified by the MACC as a conservation commissioner. I've attended several educational sessions with our staff to help me learn the, the ways of the committee, and I've attended site visits on just about every applicant's over the last year. So it's been quite a learning curve. I still have more to learn, but at this point now, I be, I'm beginning to feel like I can actually make some contributions. One of the things that I have encouraged, and to answer your question about what the commission has been doing, that I'd like to see continued, over the last year, we have given much more effort on dealing with violators. And I know Sean talked about that. He and I did not coordinate that we were both going to talk about it, but the violations seem to be becoming more numerous, more egregious, and repetitious. So the commission rightly has determined that it's time to spend more effort in dealing with violators. As far as why I chose to be on the commission in the first place, I'm a retired physician. Upon retirement, I wanted to give back to the community with some public service. I'm also a retired wilderness guide. And so Conservation Commission seemed to be a good cross between the outdoors and since wetlands interact with our aquifer, and our aquifer is our sole source of drinking water, it's a public health issue. So it's a combination of the outdoors and, and medicine. So that's why I volunteered to serve on the committee. It's been a very educational year, but there's still more to learn. With the experience I've had over the year and the teachings I've had, particularly from Maury and the other commissioners, I look forward to contributing, continuing to contribute for the next three years.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Denoncourt. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Cohen?
You were explaining that you had participated in some, a series of seminars offered by the Mass Conservation Commission?
Yes. In order to be certified, you have to attend eight seminars. They range in time from two hours to four hours. And so I've done all eight. I actually did them in my first six months, so by six months on the commission, I was certified. And now the, each of those required a tuition payment, which the town paid for. So you have invested in me as a commissioner, and I invested in the time and effort to, to learn what I needed to learn for the year. But yes, I am certified.
Thank you. And how, how do you pronounce your last name again?
Denoncourt.
Denoncourt, okay.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, you already answered mine, so thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, so now I'll turn it over to the board. There are three, three-year terms up, so each board member will have up to three votes they could choose to cast or not. With that in mind, Mr. Golden, how do you choose to cast your three votes?
I'll vote for Mr. Anderson, Mr. Churchill, and Mr. Denoncourt.
Thank you. Ms. Ayah Quinto?
I will also vote for Sean Anderson, Paul Churchill, and Paul Denoncourt.
Mr. Cohen?
And I will also vote for Sean Anderson, Paul Churchill, and Paul Denoncourt.
Mr. Quintal?
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Churchill, and Mr. Denoncourt.
All right. And myself for Mr. Anderson, Mr. Churchill, and Mr. Denoncourt. All right. So thank you, congratulations to Mr. Anderson, Churchill, and Denoncourt on being reappointed to the Conservation Commission. That brings us to the next committee, which is the Cultural Council. We have one three-year term. We had three applicants. However, the first applicant listed, Gina Colan, has indicated she intent, she wanted to withdraw her application. So that brings us to the second listed applicant, Michaela Dr. Kinderin.
All right. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Michaela Dr. Kinderin. I am a lifelong resident of Plymouth, Massachusetts. I am very interested in joining our Cultural Council because I believe culture is the heart of a strong, connected community. I took AP Art History, which deepened my appreciation for the arts, and it showed me how creative expression reflects and shapes who we are as a community. And I believe I would be a good fit for the council because I'm passionate about supporting local artists and celebrating diversity and helping create opportunities that bring people together and help share the cultural experiences.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kinderin. Any questions for Ms. Dr. Kinderin? All right. Oh, you did, oh, I didn't see you. Ms. Ayah Quinto?
Yes. Thank you, Michaela, and congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you so much.
And it's so great to see that you've applied for a variety of different boards. I know that you have a lot of varied interests. But when it comes to the Cultural Council, is there one particular area that you're interested in, like when, when you think about the kinds of cultural advancements that you might like to see Plymouth make? Is there anything that you're particularly passionate about?
Well, I definitely think diversity is absolutely the most important thing. We see our, our nation is really struggling with the idea of diversity, and I think, right now, I want to focus on that more in Plymouth and create kind of more of a safe place for individuals to have the expression of their own culture, whether that's through art and performance. I, I think it's absolutely amazing, and I would love to see more of it, so that's where I stand on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the next listed applicant, Samantha Nichols. We joined virtually by Ms. Nichols. All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry, I finally found the unmute. I'm Samantha Nichols. Been a local Realtor for 30 years. I've sat on, excuse me, multiple boards and committees over the past 25 years. I am currently on, well, up for reappointment for Cultural Council. I've been on the board for some time. We have a really great board. We are familiar with the applicants. So we have a system in place where we know who we're going to grant what to. It's typically Lisa and I that sign the grants. And it's a lot of fun. We have a great group. I also am on the Plymouth Trail Working Group. We actually maintain the town trails. It's a volunteer group. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. And I've been doing that for over a year now. We work in conjunction with Conservation and with Wildlands Trust. And actually, we just recently built the stairs over on that Rocky Hill property and cleared the pathways over there. So we do a lot of work on the local trails, too.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Nichols? If no one else does. Ms. Nichols, is there anything that the Cultural Council's currently doing that you'd like to see them continue to do if you were to be reappointed, or anything that they're not doing that you would like to see them take up in your next term if you were to be reappointed?
No, I think we have a really great group. And like I said, we, we kind of have systems in place at this point, because everybody's been on it long enough, that when we get the applications coming in, we already have an idea in our minds of who we are going to, who we are going to approve and for how much. So it's, it's a really good committee right now. And I'm really enjoying the group. It's a lot of fun.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, turn it back to the board. So this is, there are two remaining applicants for one three-year term. With that in mind, Mr. Golden, how would you like to vote?
I will cast my vote for Mr. Kinderin.
Thank you. Ms. Ayah Quinto?
I will also vote for Michaela Dr. Kinderin.
Mr. Cohen?
I'll also vote for Michaela Dr. Kinderin.
Mr. Quintal?
I'll vote for Samantha Nichols.
And myself, I will vote for Michaela Dr. Kinderin. So thank you to Ms. Nichols for your interest and in reappoint, in reapplying, and welcome Ms. Dr. Kinderin to the Cultural Council. So that brings us to Distinguished Visitors. So there are two listed applicants, Gina Colan and Kelly McElrath. Gina Colan had withdrawn from the prior Cultural Council, did not indicate whether she was intending to withdraw from this or not, but did indicate she was unable to attend this evening. So that brings us to the other applicant, Kelly McElrath.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Distinguished Visitors Committee. When I got, my name is Kelly McElrath, I'm actually the town clerk here. Next month will be three years, and that, I will say, was a fast three years. That being said, when I learned about the sister relationship with the city in Japan, Shishikahama, I was not only interested in it professionally, but also personally. So last year, when the delegation came, I worked with the, not so much the committees, but members of the committees to attend as many of those events as I could to get to know the people that came over, and I thought they were very interesting and very impressive. So I would like to join the committee in order to help flourish and nurture that relationship that has, that has occurred over so many of the past years and, and bring more, you know, hope to bring more of, more publicity to what this relationship can do for both the town of Plymouth and the city of Shishikahama. And I thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McElrath. Any questions for Ms. McElrath? Hearing and seeing none, I will turn it over to the board. There is one three-year term, and as far as I know, two applicants. So with that in mind, Mr. Golden, how would you like to cast your vote?
Ms. McElrath.
Thank you. Ms. Ayah Quinto?
I'll also vote for Kelly McElrath.
Mr. Cohen?
And I will also vote for Kelly McElrath.
Mr. Quintal?
I will also vote for Kelly McElrath.
And I will also vote for Kelly McElrath. So congratulations to Kelly McElrath on joining the Distinguished Visitors Committee. That brings us to the Harbor Committee. There are two three-year terms. There are six listed applicants. The first listed applicant is Joshua Bowes. He is an applicant for reappointment. We are joined by Mr. Bowes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Joshua Bowes. I've been on the Harbor Committee for six years now. I'm currently the vice chairman. My experience with the harbor is both personal and professional. I own a surveying and engineering firm that routinely does marine-related projects, so I'm familiar with the permitting and construction of some of the infrastructure that Plymouth has and surrounds Plymouth. Personally, I spend a lot of time during these nice months on the harbor, fishing, recreating, and spending time with the family. So I see the harbor as an incredible asset to this town. With that asset comes a number of different values. Tourism is a value. Commercial fishing is a huge part of the harbor. We couldn't have the harbor without it. There's recreation is an incredible, you know, value that the harbor offers. But there's a balance. There's a balance of that, you know, we can't just push all our, our focus on one of those assets or one of those values. So that's kind of why I'm interested in the harbor. I meet on the committee. I also see us, the Harbor Committee, as a second set of eyes. Chad Hunter, the harbor master, he wears a lot of hats. He could be, you know, doing public safety or, you know, you know, responding to, you know, a rescue or some sort of boating incident. And at the same time, he could be managing projects that are ongoing in the harbor. So we, we're always kind of looking out for Chad and everything that's going on, and I, I enjoy that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowes. Any questions for Mr. Bowes? If no one else. Is there anything that the Harbor Committee's currently doing you'd like to see them continue to do, or anything they're not doing you'd like to see them take up if you were to be reappointed?
Yes, we created a harbor management plan five, six years ago. It's, I think it's been six years ago, and it's in need of an update. The good news is we just started to update that at the last two hearing, meetings, so that's in process, so I'm glad to see that's happening.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. The next listed- The next listed applicant is Daniel Donovan. Are we joined in person by Daniel Donovan? Are we joined virtually by Daniel Donovan? We're not joined by Daniel Donovan. The next listed applicant is Jay Ferguson. We're joined physically by Jay Ferguson.
Good evening. Thank you for your consideration. My name is Jay Ferguson. I grew up in Manomet, mostly on sandy beach in a rowboat. As I got older, I worked for the Mariner Boat Shop at the top of the Pine Hills, and then I attended the Maritime Academy down in Buzzards Bay. I spent twenty-five years going to sea as a merchant seaman. I retired with the rank of chief engineer. I understand engineering. I understand harbors. I've visited twenty-five different foreign countries by boat. I've checked out a lot of water fronts over the years. I like ours. As a town meeting member, I've been involved in town meeting on and off since 2001. We were asked to consider a plan to save the seawall that runs along Water Street, and it was an interesting plan at best, but it got shot down. Now, from what I remember of the whole plan, it was presented that that wall needs to be supported before it collapses, and if they're not working on it now, I'd like to work on it myself. I think that that historic piece of rock needs to be saved. There's another issue that my wife pointed out. My wife is a ferryboat captain for the Woods Hole Steamship Authority. She commands the ferryboat Martha's Vineyard. And driving by Burt's one day, she looked at it and said, "That's got to be about the biggest eyesore in this town." Turns out, my neighbors own that property. But I, at that point, she said, "If the water wants to run in every storm and wash across the road, that would be a great spot for a boat ramp." A boat ramp to get all the trucks and trailers off the waterfront, providing more parking for, you know, tourists. But I looked up the chart for the water in front of Burt's, and if you look, it funnels right in with deep water right to Burt's. That parking area right there would be ideal for launching boats, especially if you live south of Plymouth Center. There's two places to go to launch a boat. You can either go to Plymouth Center or down to the Sagamore Boat Basin by the power plant. Neither one of those places are really traffic-friendly. It's not convenient. I don't own a boat because it's so difficult to launch and retrieve a boat. I would own a small runabout to go out fishing. I enjoy that sort of thing, but as it stands right now, the access really isn't there because it is all concentrated downtown. North Plymouth is still part of downtown if you live in Manomet. I know there's boat access up there, but I'm hoping, whether the power plant closing, I know there's a old boat ramp there that should be serviced, that should be used by the citizens, and if Burt's, if it is possible, if it isn't already committed to something else, I'd like to see that. But in the meantime, yeah, the stone wall down Water Street is collapsing, needs to be saved. I have an engineering plan for that. Like to discuss that with the rest of the harbor before I discuss it with you.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ferguson? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next listed applicant is Richard McKee. Are we joined physically by Richard McKee? Are we joined virtually by Richard McKee? We're not joined by Mr. McGee. The next listed applicant is Thomas O'Reilly, an applicant for reappointment. Mr. O'Reilly is approaching. Say a few words about why you're interested in continuing to serve.
Evening, everybody. I'm Tom O'Reilly. I've lived in the town of Plymouth for over fifty years. I've been a commercial fisherman down the dark for forty or better. I've been on the Harbor Committee now. This would be my third term. I am actually the liaison between the commercial fishing fleet and industry to the Harbor Committee, which also goes to you. My qualifications, I've had a 500-ton captain's permit, captain's license. To put that in perspective, that's five times the size of the ferryboat that comes in. I've run the Captain John boat, and I have been the assistant harbor master in the town of Plymouth. We have a very good, hard-working committee right now. We get along very well with Chad, the commercial fishing industry, through me, with the commercial guys. We work very well, like with the movie thing that came, just came, the ships that come in. I bring the word to the guys. The guys take care of what they got to take care of to get out of the way, and we let him know what we need. And I'd appreciate to continue on the committee.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tom O'Reilly? Mr. Cohen?
The previous applicant did touch on the historic qualities of our waterfront, and there are attributes down there that we want to focus on as we modernize the facility. There's been a lot of effort put into a harbor master facility in piers, dredging to maximize upstream from the harbor, the Eel River, improving the water quality to the harbor. But there's also another attribute to that harbor, and that's the uniqueness of, it's four hundred years of history. We don't have a lot of history from four hundred years ago in the harbor because we tend to, you know, tear a lot of things down pretty rapidly down there.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just, as someone on that board, I'd like you to, you know, always be thinking about qualities in our waterfront that we could be preserving to protect that unique character of our harbor here in New England.
Yeah. I just want everyone to know, all the commercial guys down there, we're, it's kind of a cliche, but we're stewards of that harbor. We love that harbor, and we want to see it progress. You know, if there's anything we can do to help, we volunteer all the time down there. We do demonstrations for kids and stuff when needed. When the harbor master needs help with, you know, boating safety or, you know, different things, we all volunteer.
It's important to know that it is a working harbor.
It is a working harbor.
People are making a living there. But at the same time, I just, I grew up on the waterfront.
Right. It's a working harbor. There's fifty-three commercial full-time oystermen. But there's also six hundred and sixty more, still. And I think we work together very well.
Right. Just in your work in the future, just do what you can to keep the historical preservation of our waterfront as part of the conversation.
Right. We don't want to see it modernized. We like it the way it is.
Okay, good. That's what I was trying to get out of you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Tom O'Reilly? Tom, before you walk away, is there anything that the Harbor Committee is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue to do, or anything they're not doing yet, but you'd like to see them start doing if you were to be reappointed?
I'm going to be honest with you. I think we have a very meshed harbor committee right now between us, the oystermen, the commercial people, the yacht club people. I think we work very well together. And now, right now, we're working on a new boat, well, the raising of the boat ramp, and all our input is listened to, all our experiences and the things that we need are listened to. We ran into a problem with the engineer the other day at the last meeting, but talking through it, he understood what we needed, and they're going to try to work around it. So basically, I think we have a good group.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And the next listed applicant is Craig Sander.
I did not expect as many people to seek roles on these boards and committees, and given the wide experience of the current candidates, I'd like to respectfully withdraw my nomination for this committee.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sander. All right. So that leaves us with five applicants for, or two three-year terms. But once again, I will go to Mr. Golden to see how he would like to cast up to two votes of his. Mr. Golden?
I will vote for Mr. Bowes and Mr. O'Reilly.
Thank you. Ms. Iaquinto?
I will also vote for Joshua Bowes and Thomas O'Reilly.
Mr. Cohen?
And I will vote for Jay Ferguson and Thomas O'Reilly.
All right. And Mr. Quintal?
I will vote for Joshua Bowes and Tom O'Reilly.
And myself, I will vote for Joshua Bowes and Thomas O'Reilly. So Joshua Bowes and Thomas O'Reilly have been reappointed, and we thank all the applicants for their interest and encourage them to apply for any future openings. That brings us to the next listed board and committee, which is the Historic District Commission. So this one is the first of tonight's batch that has multiple different terms. So there are two three-year terms for registered voters, one three-year term for a board of Realtor seat, and one three-year term for the Institute of Architects. However, I believe all of the applicants only qualify for the registered voter's position, so we will have to re-advertise the other remaining seats. But with that in mind, I will bring up the first potential applicant for one of the two three-year terms for registered voters, that being Michaela de Kinderin.
I'm Michaela de Kinderin, and I am interested in serving on the Historic District Committee because I have a deep love and respect for Plymouth and its history, its charm, and its enduring sense of place. As someone who, once again, studied AP art history, I have a great appreciation for our buildings and landscapes and the stories that they tell, and I want to help maintain the sanctity and beauty of our historic area and ensure that preservation and progress go hand in hand. And I would be honored to support the efforts that protect Plymouth's unique character for generations to come.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from board members for Mr. Kinderin? All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to the next listed applicant, Eric Parent, who I think was not here earlier, but may have appeared. Does not appear to have physically manifested himself, as he virtually, he remains elusive. That brings us to Craig Sander.
Third time a charm? Question?
Well, it's your statement, so why are you interested?
Yes. I would love to serve on Historic District Commission because I'm passionate about historic preservation. I live in the Historic District. I own a historic home. I have brought projects before the Historic District. I have read the Historic District guidelines on numerous occasions and can tell you the difference between mullions in glass, mullions real, and mullions on glass. I served on the board of the Plymouth Antiquarian Society, which is an organization dedicated to historic preservation of buildings downtown and elsewhere, and I was a participant on the board of the First Parish Meeting House. I see the import of what historic preservation does for the downtown. Tourism is a major industry in town, and that's driven in large part due to the historic buildings that we have and that we steward, and I would be very appreciative to serve on that board and carry out that work.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sander. Any questions for Mr. Sander? Does not appear that you're...
Thank you.
But thank you. And then we have the next listed applicant, which is an applicant for reappointment, Ryan Vayo.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. Ryan Vayo, I've lived in Plymouth for a little over ten years now. I own a construction company based out of Plymouth, and I would like to ask for, obviously, reappointment to the Historic District Commission. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time on the commission. I think I've learned a little bit, hopefully contributed just as much. I think the commission is an important piece to the puzzle that makes America's hometown, specifically to our current situation on the board. As you mentioned, the architecture seats are currently not filled, and the only other member who is in the construction industry did not go for reappointment, so I think that my experience is apropos to the current needs of the board. Mr. Chairman, the standard question. We are currently working on redoing the guidelines or updating them. I think we need to plow forward with that and get it to completion. We had an expansion this year, which I think was great, and I hope we continue to both evolve and expand. Evolve in the guidelines and outreach and education so that when we do expand again, it's with, hopefully, full support of that sector of the community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vayo. Any other questions for Mr. Vayo? Mr. Cohen?
So you've been on the board for how long now?
I think I filled a three-year position, but a year and so, or roughly, two-ish.
Have you seen, in that capacity, what have you, in your work as a contractor and your work on that board, have you found, you know, what do you think that you bring to the table in that capacity when it comes to preservation and when it comes to the necessity of updating a building for the new purpose in which the petitioner might be requesting?
Couple things specific to the petitioners. I think I add a perspective. Somebody else earlier spoke about helping the applicants and not just saying no because we can say no or not providing a solution. Give real feedback about other options, ways to go about things, historical details that we see and don't see, depending on the project that we're working on, specific to the board itself. I think it's a rapidly changing industry. Updating the guidelines is great for this. We're constantly seeing new materials, new options to do things. My perspective on that is a craftsman's perspective that, you know, if something that's being brought to the table as a new material would have been appreciated or used or favored in the past, and we can replicate a detail with it, I tend to lean towards moving in a direction that allows that, if it appropriately replicates something with benefits, modern benefits in material. And, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Vayo? All right. Hearing and seeing none, so we have, these applicants are all eligible for one of the two three-year terms as a registered voter. So you have up to two votes to cast, starting, as we have, with Mr. Golden.
I'll vote for Mr. Sander and Mr. Vayo.
All right. Ms. Iaquinto?
I will also vote for Craig Sander and Ryan Vayo.
Mr. Cohen?
I will also vote for Craig Sander and Ryan Vayo.
Mr. Quintal?
I will also vote for Mr. Sander and Mr. Vayo.
And myself, I will vote for Mr. Sander and Mr. Vayo. So congratulations to Mr. Sander and Mr. Vayo, and thank you to the other applicants for their applications and interest. All right. So that brings us to the Manomet Village Steering Committee. There's one three-year term. We had two applicants. However, the second-listed applicant, Hunter Young, has withdrawn his application, so that leaves us with the remaining applicant, Michaela de Kinderin, if you'd like to express your interest in serving on the Manomet Village Steering Committee.
Hi, I'm Michaela De Kinderin. I'm running for the Manomet Village Steering Committee because I care deeply about my community, and I want to help preserve what is special while also planning responsibly for its future as well. I'm a good fit for this role because I listen well, I can communicate clearly, and I believe working collaboratively to find practical solutions. I'm committed to representing the interests of all residents in my area and ensuring our community remains vibrant and a welcoming place for everyone.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kinderin? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Kinderin. I will turn it over to the Board. You have one three-year term. You have one applicant. Mr. Golden, how would you care to vote?
Yes.
All right. There's a vote for Ms. De Kinderin. Ms. Ayah Quinto?
I will also vote for Michaela De Kinderin.
All right. Mr. Cohen?
And I will also vote for Michaela De Kinderin.
Mr. Quintal?
And I will also vote for Michaela De Kinderin.
And I will also vote for Michaela De Kinderin. Congratulations, Mr. Kinderin. Thank you. So that brings us to the No Place for Hate Committee. We have five listed applicants. We have two available three-year terms. The first-listed applicant is David Brown. Are we joined in person by David Brown? Looks like we are. If you'd like to say a few words about your interest in serving on the No Place for Hate Committee?
Yes. And good evening, everyone. My name is David Brown. I'm a resident of North Plymouth. We've been in Plymouth, my wife and I, and our child. We've been here for about 21 years. A little bit about myself. I have been an educator for over 30 years, from everything from a teacher to a assistant principal and a principal, and now I am currently working for the Department of Education. In my time here in Plymouth, I also serve on a Board at the Plymouth Center for the Arts as I serve as their Vice President to the Board. I'm also trustee at Bethelway Me Church here in Plymouth as well. I say all that just to sort of put in context that I seek your appointment to the No Place for Hate Committee because I believe deeply in the Committee's mission to make Plymouth a welcoming and inclusive and safe community for all. You know, in my line of work, I bring an experience in facilitation with honest conversations around identity, bias, and equity. In my faith life, I believe that peace, as Dr. King would say, had said, that I believe that peace doesn't mean that there's an absence of conflict because we do need to speak truth to power. We also need to be able to communicate across lines. I am, you know, I do believe wholeheartedly that the idea of peace is not just a one-sided peace. It's about pulling different perspectives in. You know, as the one who lived in this town, I actually have friends on both sides of the aisle, in between and on a far extremes as well. But knowing that, you know, peace doesn't mean that there's an absence of conflict, but it means the presence of justice. So I'm joining to help facilitate just, peaceful, and inclusive process that will strengthen our entire community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Brown from members of the Board? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next listed applicant is Michaela De Kinderin.
All right. Back again. All right. My name's Michaela De Kinderin. I'm sure you've heard that once before. I am interested in joining the No Place for Hate Committee because I believe that building a truly inclusive and respectful community takes intention, compassion, and action. I'm deeply passionate about promoting respect and ensuring that everyone, regardless of their background, identity, or beliefs, feel seen, heard, and valued in Plymouth. I've always believed that diversity strengthens us, and I want to be a part of the work that helps create a safer, more understanding environment through open dialogue, education, and community engagement. I hope to help foster a culture where kindness leads and hate has no home. Serving on this Committee would be an opportunity to support the values that I hold most dear.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kinderin. Any questions for Ms. Kinderin? All right. Thank you once again. The next listed applicant is Suzanne Goldberg. Are we joined in person by Suzanne Goldberg? Are we joined virtually? We are. Ms. Goldberg, you can unmute yourself and talk about your interest in reappointment to the No Place for Hate Committee.
I would be more than happy to. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for considering my reapplication. My name is Suzanne Goldberg, and I, for 45 years, was a trauma specialist therapist in private practice. I've been on the Board for three years and seen it move from a very small organization to a very, very much more interested and involved organization. I was asked two years ago to co-chair the Islamophobia/Antisemitism Committee, and it's been very exciting. We have 10 members. We report back every month to the main No Place for Hate Board. It's growing. We have lots of activities that we've been involved in. In October, we brought Professor Peter Gorshak to the Plymouth community in conjunction with the library, and we had a very good turnout. He was a great speaker. He spoke on religious intolerance. He was a professor from Wesleyan University. And we had 65 people come to the meeting. It was well-attended. And we have so many other ideas that we're formulating. What we're trying to do primarily is look at both the similarities and the differences between these two ethnic religious groups. So we're focusing on food and music, and we just secured through Gary at the Spire Center a booking for Yanni Batat, who is, who performed at the Kennedy Center at a Broadway production of The Band Visits. He's a vocalist, instrumentalist, and combines Iraqi heritage as well as a Jewish heritage. He's a great storyteller, and we're really excited to bring the community together to see him. This is going to be on May 17th, and I hope that anyone listening will come to it because it's going to be a wonderful program. We also have a speaker series that we're going to be bringing to the community. We have an early Jews of Plymouth program that's going to be in conjunction with the Plymouth Museum, and they're going to be doing oral histories on multi-generations of people who have lived here in Plymouth. It's going to be a great program. We're going to be bringing movies to the cinema, and we're arranging for that at this point in time. We also are talking about a food fair, an international food fair, to bring people together around food and eating and talking and seeing similarities in different foods. Lots of tastings. And what we try to do is both educate the community as well as educate members on our committee. So every meeting begins with a YouTube or a reading or a historical article helping people to understand better the two cultures and ways that they come together. So I am hoping to stay on this community to be able to continue with these projects because it's an exciting committee to be on, and I'm hoping that in the next three years, we'll bring a lot to the community of Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Goldberg? Ms. Goldberg, is there anything in particular that the No Place for Hate Committee is not doing that you'd like to see them do? Or anything that they are doing that you'd like to see them continue doing if you were to be reappointed?
I think that the collegiality and the pulling together of PICA and the Police Department and the League of Women Voters and so many other committees that function well in this community are brought together under the edges of No Place for Hate. So I think that that's extremely commendable. I think that both of the heads of the Committee are doing a great job, and I just, I think that more and more people are getting interested in the Committee because they're hearing good things about it, and it stands for important things.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Goldberg? All right. Hearing and seeing none. We'll go to the next listed applicant, that being Peggy Grimes. All right. Peggy Grimes is coming, coming to the podium.
My time's up?
No, it's, you're right on time.
Thank you for having me, everyone. My name is Peggy Grimes. I moved to Plymouth in 2019. I grew up on the South Shore in Marshfield. Had my first job here in Plymouth working for Phyllis Hughes at the Old Colony Memorial. She was a mentor for me for a few years and encouraged me to go to Boston, and that's what I did. And went and had a big career in Boston for a number of years and moved back to Plymouth to sort of semi-retire, but just have definitely retired or officially retired, for sure, a few weeks ago. And several months back, I wanted to dedicate some of my time in my retirement to the community. Throughout my life, I have been advocating and volunteering consistently. I worked with the town of Ashland, where we lived for 25 years. Worked on many committees. I ran school committee. I was president of the school committee, which was a K through, I'm sorry, not school committee, a K, PTO, I'm sorry. It was a K-12 PTO, and I was the president for many years. But there were a number of other organizations in Plymouth or in Ashland that I was involved with. And then my career brought me to higher education. I worked at Northeastern University for many years. I was a co-op counselor, and in that job, I was trained in the LVGTQ+ community to become a certified ally. So every student in, at the university knew by the sign on my door that I was a safe place. I was also trained in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then in my last job, I was also on the DEI Committee and have always just been giving back to the community or to the people that didn't have the opportunity to fight for themselves. So for the past several months, I've been going to the No Place for Hate meetings. This time in our society and our history is, it's critically important to have the No Place for Hate. I've always been politically and actively involved because that is part of what we all do and what we're all here for. So I've always been educated in that area. When I first moved to Plymouth, I became clerk of the Board for the School Committee. I worked there for three and a half years. I know how town meeting works. I know how open meeting law works. I was trained in open meeting law. I know how all this works. I know what JADE is doing. So I'm familiar with all of that as well. In my career, I've done all kinds of things in administrative management. I'm really good with computers and savvy with all those kinds of things so I can help the Board with many initiatives that they have, you know, already planned and what they have planned in the future. I really look forward to being involved with the community, the community if I get appointed.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Grimes? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then the last listed applicant is Christopher Heinrich. Christopher Heinrich in attendance? Christopher, he is virtually joining us. Okay.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
We are.
Okay, perfect. So thank you for allowing me to speak for a few moments tonight regarding why I'm interested in joining the No Place for Hate Committee. Just a little background on me regarding my qualifications for this committee is that I have a PhD in public policy and administration, and my scholarship lies in the area of far-right extremism and its relationship with American immigration policy. So now, really more than ever, it's an important topic to understand nationally, but also locally in addition to so many other policy issues involving positive social change that this particular committee addresses. So as we know, immigrants and minorities are being targeted in our local and broader geographical areas. With that being said, when I received the interest form on joining committees in Plymouth, I was immediately interested in joining the No Place for Hate Committee, not just based on my academic background and interests, but really also on my personal values. Reviewing the Committee's website and attending a meeting recently, I believe there's a lot that I can contribute to the Committee and the local community. But also, there's so much more that I can learn from committee stakeholders and the activities the Committee is involved in and the ones that they promote. And in turn, I will be able to continue to give back to my local community. So again, I want to thank you for your time and consideration, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Heinrich? All right. Hearing and seeing none. We'll go to the voting phase for this appointment. So there are five listed applicants. There are two three-year terms available. So with that in mind, Mr. Golden, how would you like to cast up to two of your votes?
I'll vote for Mr. Brown and Ms. Grimes.
All right. Ms. Ayah Quinto?
I'll vote for David Brown and Christopher Heinrich.
All right. Mr. Cohen?
I will vote for David Brown and Suzanne Goldberg. I can say this, having not an active member of the Committee but participating in those meetings for the last several months, that whoever doesn't get appointed, they should participate in these meetings. It's a very welcoming committee, and it's much, it can accommodate everyone.
Thank you. I will note- I will note that Mr. Brown now has three votes. Each other individual that has been voted for so far only has one. But with that in mind, Mr. Quinto?
Mr. Brown and Peggy Grimes.
All right. And myself, I will vote for Mr. Cullen. Your second vote was for?
My first, sorry.
First was for David.
That speech was confusing things. David Brown and Suzanne Goldberg.
Okay, that's what I.
Sorry.
That's okay. So I will vote for, vote for Christopher Heinrich and I will vote for Peggy Grimes. So David Brown has four votes and Peggy Grimes has three votes. So congratulations to David Brown and Peggy Grimes on their appointments to the No Place for Hate Committee and for all of the other applicants and re-applicants. As Mr. Kohan said, we encourage you to be, remain involved and interested and to apply when other openings come forward. So that brings us to the Senior Task Force Committee. The Senior Task Force Committee has a number of terms that are up. You have 10 listed applicants. You have three one-year terms, four two-year terms, and four three-year terms. With that in mind, the first listed applicant is Pat Acorn. Is Pat Acorn in attendance? She is.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Because guess what? I've got breaking news.
Okay.
And I wanted to share it with you. We're all aging. I wanted to tell you that. And how fortunate for us to live in Plymouth where the town values an age and friendly dementia community. I have been on this committee since it was born back in November 2021. It's been over four years and very, very proud to be a part of this wonderful team who values the, the seniors and also folks that are aging of all, of all types. The, I wanted to help strengthen the partnership that we are now building across the community. That's why I'm looking for a one-year term to finish out my, what I feel is my job, especially older residents, because these folks are the ones who support our town through taxes, spending, and community involvement. And what wonderful ways we have the dignity and respect of our community. So you'd be proud to live in Plymouth and to be recognized. That's why I'm here, to renew my just one-year commitment, because at my age, I can't guarantee you three. Because I'm also representing, I represent the, my team's over there. I'm also representing the older community. Our force was made up of, oh my goodness, all types of business folks and they also, Michelle Braddy asked some seniors to join. She chose me and my, my other friend who was part of the team. And we've been working very, very hard on this now and I just wanted to, to tell you how important it is. We are right now at the crux. This is like the big thing going on right now. We have now gone out into the community. We've gone to businesses. We've said to them, hey, look, we want to train you. We want to get you to understand about aging and dementia. And we've already conducted one group. You'll be hearing from a couple of them that have been part of the training. So when you go into a restaurant and you bring your aunt who has Alzheimer's, you have a card and the little card says, "I am with a dementia patient." And the waiter or waitress will handle it because they've been trained in this business or they've been trained at a Plymouth Fitness Center, for example, because they're part of the team. So this is very, very important to us. We, we value this, this job and the dignity and respect of the seniors, which is a huge thing for me. I've been part of the Center for Active Living for over 20 years. This was just, how should I say, a flash in the pan to join and it just grew and grew. And you heard Captain Manuel when we talked about going out into the community. And we created the senior voices and we've been to all the senior housings. We've been to mobile home parks. We've been to the Little Red Schoolhouse. We've been to so many places, talking to seniors. Why are we doing that? Because we want to know what's going on, what do they need, what are their concerns, being health or material items? So this, this whole thing is just blossoming just beautifully and so that's it. I could go on for days, so just tell me, that's it. Zip the lip.
All right. Thank you. So you were interested in the one-year term?
I just, yeah.
Yes.
Because like I said, I, no promises, you know what I mean?
Well, hopefully.
No, really.
All right. Well, hopefully you'll be back next year, but.
Well, you and a few other, you and a few other people.
All right.
I love what I do, you can see that, and I love the seniors. And I also represent the, as we call each other now, the elder population.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any questions?
Let's see. Any questions?
Hi, Derek.
No questions. Thank you very much. All right. The next applicant is Cheryl Botieri.
I am so glad she got to go first. Yes. You can just feel from her the spirit of teamwork and, and all of the, the work that this task force has done from its inception to now, we're really feeling this is our coming out party in a way, right? That we are able to be a committee, an actual committee under the Select Board. So thank you so much. I come to this as a volunteer at Cal for over 10 years and my husband and I started with the secret senior Santa. And we got to go on the weekends because both working and we would be able to bring surprise gifts to seniors in need that might not have had family. So my background is in family education. I have a master's in family education, underground and communication, and I am an end-of-life educator. So as Pat says, you know, we don't know, but we all know we are going to go. And so for us, the Senior Center is a place where we can bring people together to learn how to live well, age well, and die well. That's kind of what I share. But on the Aging and Dementia Friendly Task Force that we're doing, this initiative, we all get to work together. And so I've been working with the chamber, with the committee, and with the Alzheimer's Family Support Center so that we can work together to train businesses and other organizations and group, groups within the community. So I really want to stay on, so I, I hope you consider me for a three-year term so that we can, like Pat said, really get going with this work. So we're really starting the action plan.
Okay. And you wanted, if you had your druthers, a three-year term?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Botieri? All right. Thank you. The next listed applicant is Elizabeth Connell, an applicant for reappointment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chairman, to the board and Town Minister here, Brent Dizzi. I have a follow-up on Pat's breaking news for people who may not know this. Forty-one percent of the population in Plymouth is over the age of 55. And this is why we have this task force and it's why we need this task force. The work that we have been doing over the past four years has been incredibly important in getting the community designated as an age and dementia-friendly community. And when I say age-friendly, it just doesn't mean for people who are over the age of 55. That's for everyone in the community. Age-friendly is from, you know, ankle-biter size all the way up. And it's important to remember that. And I think if you start to learn about what an age-friendly community is, you'll understand how beneficial it is for a community. We have our work cut out for us with a growing population of older adults, again, 55 and over, currently 41%, and that's going to continue to grow. And so our committee is going to be looking at, what are some of the challenges for any community? And it's not just Plymouth. Areas in Massachusetts also have very high percentages as well and across the country. So what do we need to do to be able to serve those individuals as we move forward with an age and dementia-friendly community? Will we have the right transportation, as Captain Manuel talked about? Will we have the kind of housing that we need for older adults in our community? Will we have the opportunities for civic engagement? That's part of what our work is going to be, I think, in the coming years. And so I have asked for a two-year reappointment and I appreciate your time. So thank you.
All right. So you would like a two-year term? All right. Any other questions for Ms. Connell? Seeing none? Thank you. We now have Kevin Hood is our next listed applicant, also an applicant for reappointment. Mr. Hood is approaching.
Good evening, Select Board, Town Manager, Brent Dizzi, everybody in the room. My name is Kevin Hood. I have lived in this town since my birth. Went to schools here. I own two businesses in this town. I got involved a few years ago when Michelle Braddy asked me to join this group. I have four things that are really important to me. Our elders, our children. I know people are going to laugh about domestic pets, but also our veterans. And our elders in this town should be taken care of. So I joined this group. My group over there, these amazing, dynamic people, we've really strived to really make progress in this town. The Cal has been a wonderful thing already that's in progress there, but we have done things like having our age and dementia designation, you know, qualifications through UMass. The things that we're doing are to get people outside, isolation, all these things are important to me. And for a reappointment, if you guys elect to put me back on, that's great. I sit over a lot of boards in this town. I sit on a lot of committees, but this one's one of the ones that I'd like to see through. So if you find it suited, put me back on, that'd be great.
Do you have a preference for duration if you had your druthers?
Six months to, no, I'm just kidding. Michelle has asked me to do either two or three years and I'm open for either one to fill whatever position would make it easy for, for this committee.
Okay. Do you have no preference between two or three?
I'll leave it up to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hood? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. The next listed applicant is Jeffrey La Forest.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity this evening to speak to you about this incredible Senior Task Force Committee. I had the pleasure, oh, about a month ago to, I was invited to attend one of the meetings. And in doing so, I have never seen such an eager group of people that want to help this town and help our seniors. The energy in the room was just invigorating and I just wanted to be a part of it. So they invited me to also attend the Senior Task Force, actually the Age and, Age and Dementia Friendly Training, which I did. And so we took some of our staff from Cartmel Davis Funeral Home, which I am one of the owners with my husband, and we went for the training. So this training was intense. We learned a lot about age and dementia friendliness and how the community is going to expand this particular program. Given my training, I was a 30-year flight attendant for American Airlines prior to getting back into the family business with Cartmel Davis. And I worked on developing committees with diversity. I trained flight attendants. I also worked on programs such as this, where we would do diversity and inclusion training for them as well. I think that experience that I have, given with my experience with the funeral home, we deal with a lot of folks coming and a lot of them do have challenging family members. And I think that my personal experience as well, my dad passed away from Alzheimer's about eight years ago and I'm currently going through this one more time with my mom. So I have a love for this. This is something that, to be part of this particular team that has this energy, where we can put together these ideas, get involved in the community, and spread the word out there, I just think that it would be an amazing opportunity. Again, full disclosure, this would be my first committee that I would serve on for the town. Thirty years around the globe, my feet are grounded here in Plymouth. I grew up in the area and as a matter of fact, my grandfather's drugstore was at Gunther Tootie's. So I've been around for a while. I know a lot of people in this town and I just think it would be a right fit for me and I also think it might be a right fit for the committee as well.
All right. Thank you. Do you have a preference in terms of a duration of term?
I do. I think I'd like to do a three-year term because once you start something, I'd like to really see it through. But I have no first preference, of course, three years, but I would really like to be on it for as long as I could because I think once you start to get into it, you kind of don't want to leave in the middle on it.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next listed applicant is Nicole Long. She is an applicant for reappointment. Are we joined? She's not here. Is she on virtual? She is here, virtual. Okay. Nicole Long, you can unmute yourself and talk about why you would like to seek reappointment.
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. I thank you very much for the opportunity to be here through the hybrid option. I am sorry to not be there in person. I have been part of this committee since it was created and I think as everybody who has spoken before me, it's a phenomenal committee and we are doing really great work and I would love to continue that work and not only support the, the action plans that are in progress, but to also support new applicants as they join the committee. I think it's really important to have a good succession plan in place for any type of committee and I'd like to support that process. Professionally, I am the CEO for Old Colony Elder Services, which is the state-appointed aging service access point for Greater Plymouth County. We have a lot of programs. We have, Plymouth is one of our largest service areas, our service towns, which gives me a very keen insight onto the needs of the individuals in the area. It also provides me with access to supporting outreach and communication that I think is a help to this committee. I'm also part of the Board of Directors for the Plymouth Housing Authority and some other organizations like the Greater Plymouth County CHINA. Overall, I just, I live in Plymouth professionally. I understand the needs of this population and it's really of all, of all ages, not just older adults, people with disabilities, you know, even younger individuals. I think it's very important that we normalize the aging process and if I'm afforded an opportunity to connect what I do professionally in the town that I love living in, you know, that could be very important to me. I would be able to do a one-year term unless the Select Board feels that they would like a different duration, but that is what I'm initially volunteering to do.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Long? Hearing and seeing none? Thank you. The next listed applicant is Joanne Moore.
Thank you so much for having me here today. My name's Joanne Moore. I've lived in Plymouth for 23 years, raised my children here. I'm the Director of the Duxbury Senior Center and have been there for 23 years. In Duxbury, we are also doing the age and dementia friendly process, so I bring that expertise to the committee. I've been on the committee since its inception as the Vice Chair and it is an amazing group of passionate people who want to make a difference in their hometown and I hope you will consider me to continue doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Before, two questions.
Sure.
Number one, so you do this for a living and then you volunteer doing it in another community? You must really enjoy it.
I do. I, I feel honored to be able to work with the older adults in both communities.
All right. Well, I appreciate your. All right, well, I appreciate your service. Do you have a preference as to duration of term?
One or two years, please.
One or two, okay, thank you. Yeah, one year for Nicole. And then the next listed applicant is Karen Peterson.
Good evening. So my name's Karen Peterson, and I work at Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital in Plymouth. And I've been on the Senior Task Force now for almost three years and have really enjoyed this wonderful team of people. I originally came into it because I had a lot of experience with the needs assessment process. We were going through that for the age and dementia friendly designation. But very quickly, just really fell in love with the group of people. The work that we're doing is just amazing. I feel that being a part of the health system, it's been nice to play that role on the committee and to be able to, I feel like we all bring a different expertise, a different perspective to the group, and really looking forward to hopefully finishing the work that we started. I guess it's never done, but at least continuing the work over, hopefully, the next three years.
So you would like a three-year term?
Yes.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Peterson? Hearing and seeing none, thank you. The next listed applicant is Janet Ricardi. Ricciardi, my apologies.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Janet Ricciardi. I've lived in Plymouth since August of '21, I believe in Sawyer's Reach. Thanks to this wonderful lady, Pat Acorn, that is why I started and got involved in this to begin with. I've been attending the meetings since the fall. I started because of the age and dementia. I'll give you just a little history of why that is of interest to me. I was a consultant for the City of Taunton doing dementia training for some of the employees there, for a lot of the businesses, and ran monthly workshops at the library. So that, it's close to my heart. I have family members who have passed of dementia. I'm also, I've retired twice. I worked 25 years for Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts, executive staff there. Retired from there in 2007, and 2009 was hired by the Patrick, by Duval Patrick's Office to be the South Coast Regional Networked and Homelessness Coordinator. Worked for 15 years doing that, retired last June from that particular position. And I have a nonprofit in Attleboro that, the South Coast was considered Bristol County. That job was to work with all the agencies in Bristol County and other counties too, because they overlap, to provide, to look at the homeless services, to get people that provide homeless services on the same page. I also have a nonprofit in Attleboro called the Northern Bristol County Assistance Collaborative. We started it when we saw a need for, in Attleboro, in the Attleboro area for a, I lived in Norton before we moved to Plymouth, and a couple of us started this to build a shelter in Attleboro. And we opened that shelter this past November. Housing, Housing, no, Neighbor Works Housing Solutions, they've changed their names a couple of times, built the building for us. We've got all the money, they, we identified the property, we actually tore down a building, built a building. It has 18 emergency shelter units on the first floor managed by Catholic Charities, and it has 22 units on the second and third floor managed by Father Bill's Mainstream. In that building, on the second and third floor, a third of the people that live there are people over the age of 55. If you've done, if you know anything about homelessness, you know that a lot of the people that are homeless now are living in their cars, and most of them, I shouldn't say most, I think about a third to a half of them are people over the age of 55. And that's another reason I'm very interested in this task force. I think that there's a lot of work to be done in all of our communities, not just in Plymouth. And as Elizabeth said, there's 41% of aging people in this community. And I tell you, that 41% are not, they probably don't even know of that, probably half of them don't even know about the Cal, don't even know what is happening. And the age and dementia is what brought me in, the Alzheimer's stuff, and I'm still committed, I love it, and I'm interested in a three-year term.
Three-year term, okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ricciardi? Ricciardi? My apologies. No questions, thank you very much. The next listed applicant is Michael Vance.
Thank you again. I appreciate your time and consideration. First of all, I'm a huge fan of Nicole. I worked with her in Boston. I was the CEO of Central Boston Elder Services, which is the sister agency for Old Colony down here. So I'm very, very familiar with Elder Services. I first moved to Plymouth in 1984. My son was born at Jordan Hospital, when there was a Jordan Hospital. I moved back in 2018. I knew that I was going to retire down here. So I've lived down here, but in terms of my experience, I've been in social services. I was Vice President for Action for Boston Community Development. From there, I went on to become CEO of Central Boston Elder Services, so Protective Services and all of the different elder services. We had elderly housing as well. Worked through COVID, and then right after COVID, I retired down here to Plymouth. This is what I do. I love the energy of these folks. I've met some of them for the first time tonight, but just experiencing their enthusiasm for this population is what, excuse me, is what it's all about. And I just want to offer my experience, my years of experience in social services, sitting on a lot of different boards, 90% of it obviously was in the city of Boston. I've commuted up Route 3 for the last 100 years, it feels like, gone through many, many cars, and I look forward to serving. Four years would be great, but I would take one year.
You would take one year?
I would definitely take one year, but whatever is left.
One year is available.
One year is what I would take.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Vance? All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
So compiling everyone's preferences, we have, we have 10 applicants for 11 seats total, but the terms are different. But luckily, the terms that people want, or at least the terms that they're able, they're willing to take, because some had two preferences, line up so that if we wanted to vote as a slate, we could vote for Cheryl Botieri for three years, Jeffrey La Forest for three years, Karen Peterson for three years, Janet Ricciardi for three years, Elizabeth Connell for two years, Kevin Hood for two years, Joanne Moore for two years, and then Pat Acorn, Nicole Long, and Michael Vance for one year. We don't have to do that, but we could. Is there a wish of the board to make a motion?
I would make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Golden makes the motion that we vote for the slate as just enumerated. Does that have a second?
I will second that.
All right, it has been seconded. Any discussion about voting for the slate as enumerated? All right, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintal?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All of those individuals have been appointed for those various terms. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to Visitors Services Board. So Visitors Services Board, we originally had four applicants. The second applicant, Gina Colon, rescinded her application. So that leaves us, and there's also a Scrivener's error on the agenda. Steve Lyden was listed as, I think, a Citizen at Large, but he should have been a Plymouth Development and Industrial Commission position. So we have Chris Anzoni for, applicant for reappointment for Plymouth County Development Council, Sue Crabbe for Citizen at Large, and Steve Lyden for Plymouth Development and Industrial Commission. But with that in mind, is, are we joined by Chris Anzoni?
I understand. Hey, I'm Chris Anzoni. My background's in transportation, the family business was Plymouth and Brockham Street Railway. I worked there as the Vice President. Involved with that goes hand in hand with tourism, and I joined off a lot of committees locally, regionally, nationally, and whatnot. We sold the business in 2005, and they, the group, the PCDC, they asked me to be the representative, nominated me for the representative. I've done it for three years now. My involvement with the Visitors Service Board, I've seen it from both sides. Originally, I was an applicant. We had the American Hometown Trolley. We did that for, I don't know, seven, eight, nine years, or whatever. So I was always hat in hand, looking for money. So I know what it's like when the people come to us asking for the money, so I can look at it from their perspective. I think another element that I bring to it a little bit too, I'm a lifelong resident. I mean, I'm kind of probably get dodged and feathered for saying this, but I remember when I was a, you know, punk in high school and stuff, we would march around, tourist go home with the signs, you know, because, I don't know, we're just troublemakers as kids, but, you know, you grow up. And so as I grew up and in a business that relied very heavily on tourism, obviously my attitude changed completely. But I think one of the things that I look at as we, as the different projects come across our desks, is I look at being a lifelong resident Plymouth versus the newness and all the things, just the presentation we saw tonight was a pretty wild object that they were trying to bring into the town. I look at it, I think, with a very seasoned approach that I can balance my attitude in a sense of, you know, looking at the past and also looking at the future, both for the town. So I wasn't quite sure when you were leaving, but I was a little confused whether I'm appointed, and I know I'm nominated by the PCDC, is that the same as being appointed, or is that different?
So this says different seats for different eligible criteria for, as a prerequisite, so you're an applicant for reappointment for the PCDC slot?
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Any questions for him? No. You're all set? Sue Crabbe?
People are afraid to say it, but it's crabby. So as everyone else has said, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I have to say that I've been so impressed with the number of people and the qualifications of people that have come before me. It's really, we're very lucky as a town to have so many wonderful folks. I think I've been on the Board for two and a half years. It's been a true pleasure for me to help shape the many events that are funded by the Board. We're an integral part of the town's promotional marketing effort. I think I'm a very active member of the Board, and it's been educational and enjoyable for me. And my commitment goes beyond attending meetings. I've made it a point to visit many of the public improvements that we fund, as well as attending many of the events, so I can gauge the impact of our funding. I just want to thank you for your time. It's been a long night, so I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Steve Lyden?
Steve Lyden, I guess I'm a senior member of the VSB, and I have to tell you that this committee has come a long way. And our committee members that you just heard from, it's all the work of the committee. Our work has been fun, but it's also been hard at times. But we've expanded to do a lot more than just events. We are supposed to have 10% of our budget to go for infrastructure. And since we started doing that, we've reached out to the Police Department, the Park Department, David Gould Department, and many other departments to improvements that this town probably couldn't afford to do. So it's a great committee, and I'd like to stay on this committee. I think we do good work. I think tough times are coming now because of the economy. Supposedly tourism is going to be down. A lot of the Canadian tour buses are not coming to America this year. So our budget might be tight next year, and so we're going to have to work hard to see what we can do to help everyone out again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lyden? You're all set? Thank you. So we have three eligible applicants for three unique categories. We could vote them as a slate, or we could vote them individually. I will leave that up to the Board as to preferences.
I move to vote as a slate.
All right, Ms. Iaquinto votes that we, moves rather, that we vote as a slate for the eligible criteria. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Golden seconds. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintal?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous, we have voted for all of the applicants for their positions. Thank you, appreciate that. All right, so that brings us to the last Board and Committee appointment of the evening, which is the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have four listed applicants. We have one three-year term as a full member, one three-year term as an alternate member. First member, first applicant rather, is Edward Carl.
I appreciate your time, and the reason why I applied for this, for this Board, and it was my primary first choice, I've sat on this Board before. I understand the primary purpose of the Board is to protect and oversee regulations for the town, and also balance individual property rights, those two things. And to create zoning bylaws and make sure that they get, that they get observed and followed. With that said, I, you know, and I understand this process, I would hope that you would take some consideration and look at me as, maybe a fresh face because I haven't been around for a while, you know, took a hiatus with the kids for a long time between the Scouts and teaching high school, and back to the community, and I love this community. It's such a great place to live. I grew up in North Quincy on the beach, and I moved down here, and I got away from the trains and the cars and the beauty down here. I started in White Horse Beach, ended up in South Plymouth, and now I'm sitting over by the plantation. And it's a beautiful town. I think that we've gone in maybe a few kooky directions in the last several years. I understand expansion is what it is. It's a big, big town. I don't think people realize how big this town is, that 103 or 106 square miles, you know. And I remember when I was on the Finance Committee, the budget, the first year I was on was $68 million. I couldn't believe that kind of money, just unbelievable. I don't even know what it is now, to be honest.
Oh, 325?
Yeah, so, and I'm only 24 and a half. So I would appreciate your consideration. I understand this process, and I know a lot of people, and I know a few of you personally, and I would appreciate the opportunity to serve either position. And I have served as an alternate before. And I'll leave you with this one thing. The one big case that I sat on was Home Depot. And Home Depot was going to be down on Hedges Pond Road on the piece of property right now that had access from the fire station. It was the only It was the only access to that piece of property. I can't believe we're still talking about that piece of property now, 30 years later, and it's still trouble, because it was trouble then. Anyways, I appreciate your time. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Carl? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your time. I really do appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Our next listed applicant is Kevin O'Reilly, who is an applicant for reappointment, currently holding the full member seat.
Good evening, all. Kevin O'Reilly. I just want to compliment you on the way you've been able to plow through this tonight. And I know it's getting late. I'll be brief. I'd appreciate your support as a reappointment to the three-year term, that I'm just finishing up my first term on the zoning board. I've enjoyed my time there. I think I've worked hard. You know, it's not just showing up every other week. There's a lot of work that you need to do ahead of time, taking a look at the cases, taking a look at the sites, going through the plans. Luckily, I have the time to do that now. Grew up here, raised my kids here, been very active in this community, and would appreciate your support. Before I answer any questions, I just want to shout out to the staff that supports the zoning board. I don't think they get enough credit for all of the hard work that they do to make our jobs easier, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Any questions for Mr. O'Reilly? All right. Thank you. Eric Parent, who was not here earlier, but may have appeared. He has not. He continues to elude us. That brings us to David Peck, who is an applicant for reappointment, currently holding the alternate seat.
Thank you very much. I will apply the 3B rule to my remarks. Begin, be brief, be seated. So just very briefly, I'm a retired architect. I worked at Children's Hospital in Boston as their Director of Facility Planning for 35 years. I've been with the Zoning Board of Appeals in different roles, currently as an alternate, and happy to do it, by the way. What I think I bring to help the community of Plymouth is my experience as an architect and planner. So I always examine each applicant, large or small, with what makes sense, from planning point of view, from context, with its neighbors, and provides enough space for the functionality that they're requesting. So I enjoy working with the, my current fellow members. Kevin O'Reilly's terrific, so I will put in a shout out for his support as well. And we're a good group. We have a lot of hard work we've done and is coming up, and I hope to be part of it. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Peck? Mr. Peck, are you comfortable remaining in the alternate seat?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. So we have two different seats, so I'll call for the first for the ZBA three-year term seat out of the applicants, the listed applicants. Mr. Golden?
I vote for Mr. O'Reilly.
All right. Ms. Iaquinto?
I'll also vote for Mr. O'Reilly.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, and I will vote for Kevin O'Reilly.
Mr. Quintal?
Kevin O'Reilly.
And myself for Mr. O'Reilly. Congratulations, Mr. O'Reilly, on your reappointment. Then for the alternate seat, Mr. Golden?
I vote for Mr. Peck.
Thank you. Ms. Iaquinto?
I also vote for Mr. Peck.
Mr. Cohen?
And I also vote for David Peck.
Mr. Quintal?
Mr. Peck.
And myself for Mr. Peck, so congratulations to Mr. Peck. Mr. Carl, thank you for your interest. Please reapply in the future. We appreciate you applying for these, as well as sticking around for the entire evening, so thank you very much. They did. They did. Thank you. All right. So we will now take a five-minute recess and then come back. So we will be back at approximately 9:57 or so.
All right. The five minutes thereabouts having elapsed, we are back from our brief recess. We are now talking not about who we will appoint to various boards so much as who among us will serve in various capacities. So the Select Board serves in a number of different boards and committees throughout the community in various capacities. We appoint or reappoint people to those various positions on an annual basis. We have in our packet a list of what the assignments were in 2025 and 2020, so that that could help inform them in 2026. So on the board, on the screen, hopefully it's relatively readable to the camera, but I've asked that the chart that's included in our packet be included up there. Mr. Golden had to board a flight, so I don't anticipate he'll be joining us any longer, but he did communicate his preferences to me in case that were to happen, which I believe it did. So I think for this, what I'd like to start, I'd like to do it kind of in phases. First, go through for those members of the board that are still on the board from last year to see if they want to continue in any of the roles they already have, in which case, unless there's strong disagreement from other members, I would suggest we allow people to continue. And then, but if they don't wish to continue, we can move that on to the next phase, and then we can take things from there and whittle it down, unless someone has a different idea on how they'd like to approach it. All right. So with that in mind, the first board or committee with a current board member assigned to it last year was the Cemetery Commission, which Mr. Quintle had. Mr. Quintle, did you wish to continue in that position?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The next was the Committee of Precinct Chairs, which Mr. Golden serves on, and we started that last year. Mr. Golden and I have discussed eliminating that as an official position, but sharing the responsibilities of it between ourselves when we are available. That has functionally been how we've conducted it over the past year, so unless there are objections, that's how I would suggest we continue with that. The next would be the Distinguished Visitors Committee. That is a committee that I serve on. I would like to continue in that capacity. The next would be Insurance Advisory. Mr. Quintle, you currently serve on that. Would you like to continue?
Yes, I would, sir.
Okay. The next is the Master Plan Committee. This is a committee involved in the master planning process for the entire community, not the whole tech one. It is, has an intended finish point in 2026. I have served on it since its inception. I would prefer to continue in that capacity. The next is, it's listed as Endicap/Nuclear Matters Committee. The Nuclear Matters Committee is functionally defunct. There is a position on Endicap related to a member, not a board member, on nuclear matters, so I think we need to keep it around in that capacity. But I don't think the board appointment should be referring to nuclear matters for, because then I'd never be able to talk to the other person on the Nuclear Matters Committee, and the committee never met, hasn't met since 2017. So I would suggest we eliminate the reference to the Nuclear Matters Committee, retain the Endicap position, title, and I will continue on that assignment. The next is the Plymouth County Advisory Board. Mr. Quintle, you currently serve in that capacity. Would you like to continue?
Yes.
The next one is the Plymouth Regional Economic Development Foundation. So this one is unique in the sense that it travels with the Chair of the Select Board. It can be either the Chair or a designee of the Chair. So I do not intend to serve on it myself, but I have reached out to an individual, Leanna Patton, to serve as the designee of the Chair. She's a precinct 16 town meeting member, so that's my preferences for the Plymouth Regional Economic Development Foundation seat. And then lastly, in terms of current board members, we have the Wastewater/Groundwater Discharge Citizens Advisory Committee, which I think is similar to the Master Plan Committee, is also winding down its work, which Mr. Golden serves on, and he would like to continue in that capacity. So does anyone have any objections to the prior positions being continued for those individuals? Okay. All right. So then that brings us to, well, the first one to revisit would be C. Plymouth. So C. Plymouth is also either the Chair of the Select Board or a designee of the Select Board Chair. So it's structured differently than the others. And Ms. Iaquinto, my understanding is you would be interested in serving as the designee?
Yes, that's right. I would love to do that.
So then, that leaves the remainders. So for, we can go through these and see what level of interest other members have in serving on these. See if there's multiple members that have interest. We can do another round, but if only one individual wants to, then we can potentially assign that individual to it. And then if there's not interest for some of these, we could talk about putting a designee on them, not at this meeting, but at a future meeting, because that would be a separate action of the board. But first and foremost would be the Affordable Housing Trust. Does any current board member have interest in serving on the Affordable Housing Trust? Mr. Cohen? Okay. Anyone else? All right. The Capital Improvements Committee?
I'm not too interested in that.
You are?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, we'll see if you still are next year. All right. Good luck. The Center for Active Living Advisory Board. Mr. Golden expressed interest, but didn't seem territorial about it. So he's willing to serve on it, but is open to others serving on it if anyone is interested. Champing at the bit to serve as the...
We can still attend these meetings.
You can...
Although we're...
Yes.
Even if we're not the liaison.
With rare exceptions. The South Shore Community Action Council is a board meeting of an entity, not a public meeting. Same with the Regional Economic Development Foundation, but for the others, yes. I think the GATRA Advisory Board meets out of town, so that one might be a bit of a commute, but you're welcome to commute. Ironic for a transportation board. All right. So the CAL, do we want to give it to Mr. Golden, or does someone else want to swoop in? All right. All right. The Community Preservation Committee? Interest in a... All right. Mr. Cohen? Anyone else? Now, the next one listed is the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. We have never had anyone assigned to that, and I think that one would be bet, personally, I think might be better served with a designee. However, if someone on the board is champing at the bit to serve on the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan Committee, I'm open to that as well. So does anyone wish to serve in that capacity, or should we put it for a designee position? Mr. Janelle, you would like to serve?
No.
Okay. Do we have any objection to having Mr. Janelle serve as our designee?
I think this would be great.
All right. So then, the GATRA Advisory Board, we already have, is that, Derek, is that your designee? Is Lindsay Rake, or is she our designee?
She's the Select Board's designee.
Okay.
Maybe a change in match is our...
Okay. So Lindsay Rake is our current designee, and as far as I know, wishes to continue in that position. So unless there's objection, I'd say we stick with Lindsay Rake. Then the Harbor Committee. Mr. Quintle, did you wish to...
If there's no objections, I, they reached out to me, two members, and asked. I was going to a few of them anyway.
Okay.
You know, it was Johns.
Okay.
With the cruise lines and all. I think they said they talked to Bill, too, did they? Someone talk to you from there? No?
But these meetings, you couldn't, you know, you can attend these meetings.
Right.
For educational purposes, so.
Right.
No. You could go right in.
All right. So Mr. Quintle, you'd like to serve on the Harbor Committee position?
Please.
Okay. All right. The Little Red Schoolhouse Committee was previously, Mr. Cohen? MBTA Advisory Board, we have Lee Hartman as our designee. He's willing to continue. I would say we let him do so. Same thing with the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Mr. Hartman has it, is willing to continue. Then we have the No Place for Hate Committee. John Mahoney currently had that.
I've been already going to those meetings for the last several months, so I'd be happy to continue it, but recommend that people should, you know, if they have an opportunity to attend one of the meetings, they should think about it. Very educational in terms of what they cover.
All right.
I want you on the way. I'm in.
I'll let you know. Do we have any other members that are interested in No Place for Hate?
I'm actually interested in it, but I don't want to...
Well, we can, we can talk about it if you're interested in it between the two. So if you're interested, you're interested.
No, I think Bill, Bill is...
Okay.
Probably better.
Hey, encourage you to come, come to the meetings either way.
All right. Old Colony Elder Services, Michelle Bratty is our designee, willing to continue. I say we let her do so. Old Colony Joint Transportation Committee, James Downey, Assistant DPW Director, is our designee, is willing to continue. I say we let him do so. Old Colony Planning, presumably Old Colony Planning Council, Lee Hartman willing to do that. I say we permit the continuance of that. Seeing no objection. Roads Advisory Committee. This is one that could be a great candidate for a future designee, unless someone really wants to be on the Roads Advisory Committee. Okay. We can seek out a designee for that one. The South Shore Community Action Council, that is one that we could appoint a designee to, or we could appoint a board member to. Does any current board member have a strong desire to be a board member of the South Shore?
I'm actually interested in that.
And then the Local Scene, this is one we could send a designee to, but we could send a board member to. Does any board member wish to serve on the Local Scene?
I'd like to try it out. I mean, I always, I can always report back and see if it's a candidate for a designee. I'll try it out.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Oh, did you want to do it?
I was going to jump out.
Oh, oh, go, no, you take it. Oh, absolutely. Sorry.
Since you've got No Place for Hate, I'll take the Local Scene.
Right. Fair is fair.
It's fair.
Okay. All right. So we would seek out a designee for Roads Advisory. We're seeking to eliminate COPC, but hold it in an unofficial, in an unofficial capacity between the Chair and the Vice Chair, or the current holders. And otherwise, we have retaining last year's, adding to numbers, numerous of them. Affordable Housing Trust would be Bill. CIC would be Deb. CAL would be Dave. CPC would be Bill. Mr. Janelle for Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. Dick to Harbor Committee, Bill, Little Red Schoolhouse. Bill to No Place for Hate. And then Deb to C. Plymouth, South Shore Community Action Council, and the Local Scene. Everybody okay with that slate? Do I have a motion to approve that slate of board committee liaison assignments?
So moved.
Has been moved by Ms. Iaquinto. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Has been seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none? Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Out of the four of us remaining, it is unanimous. We have assigned ourselves to these various board and committee liaison assignments. So that brings us into public comment. Do we have any public that wishes to comment? Yes, you may take the podium and identify yourself.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to thank our Director of Inspection Services, Jason Silva, and also our Town Manager, Derek Brindisi, for helping the Bradford area neighborhood with the little bit of a rocky start we got with Marina construction. They were starting at the hour of 6:15 and 6:30 for their first week of demolition, and Mr. Silva was really responsive, and Mr. Brindisi was at the site last Monday morning to make sure that they were not starting up and not creating all the, wreaking all the havoc before the necessary time. So thank you so much. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public that wishes to comment? All right. Hearing, and anybody online, Jade? All right. Now the Town Manager's Report.
All right. I'm going to keep this short because it's late, and Jade's going to bring up a few slides. So I'll start with an update I received today by Mr. David Gould. So as you know, Piping Plovers are an annual event two years ago, so this will be the third summer in a row that we have piping plovers that are nesting at White Horse Beach. So those are the two nest areas. Currently, there is symbolic fencing around that nest area. They are expected to hatch right around July 3 in that area. So you'll see from those circular rings, both yellow and blue, those represent areas where vehicles will not be allowed to traverse. So why is this important? As you know, there's a big event that takes place on July 3 every year on White Horse Beach, so we'll be communicating with the public and the residents that these areas certainly will be off limits to bonfires, fireworks, and UTVs to go ahead and protect those birds. So more to come on this, but this was just reported this morning. So I guess we jump to Plymouth Beach. So you, there was a story last week at the, through the Independent, there was a press release released by Casey Kennedy, our Communications Coordinator. The Fire Chief and Police Chief, they had to move quickly because Plymouth Beach, we were having, and this is not a new problem, it's actually happened over the last few years, that folks parking at Plymouth Beach were parking anywhere possible. And so it posed a significant public safety hazard. So the Police Chief ordered that these water-filled Jersey barriers be installed down the center line of Plymouth Beach. This is a no parking zone of Plymouth Beach, so I bring it to the board's attention, because certainly folks will probably be upset that, well, we have to reduce the number of parking spaces. But what was realized last Wednesday, we could not get any emergency vehicles down this end of Plymouth Beach. So for safety reasons, we will prohibit parking down the center line of the beach. We predict, we may have lost maybe 10 parking spots, but quite frankly, that's always, should have been a no parking area anyway, so the way we look at it is we're really not losing any parking spaces. What we're doing is we're protecting the safety of the public, and it also creates a queue line for those folks that want to go to the guard shack before you enter the crossover. So this was an article Plymouth Independent ran. We did receive a few phone calls about trying to get clarity as to why we did this, so, you know, using the Town Manager's Report as an opportunity to explain the decisions that were made by both the Fire Chief and Police Chief. So this is a, so as you know, it's been a lot going on at Jenny Pond over the past three months now. This is some recent photos of the footbridge that was installed two weeks ago. This footbridge will be online effective July 1, so it'll be open for pedestrian crossing. We still have a little bit more work to do, some brickwork has to take place, pavers, and then we're finishing up the facade stone around the bridge. But again, a lot of credit goes to David Gould and his team for doing an amazing job with this bridge, and so there'll be a lot more to come with this project as we start to make our way down to Brucea Garden. But this is just an update of where we are with this project. And then the old Harbor Master Shack, so a couple of things on this one. So this, as the board remembers, back in December, $30,000 of APRA was appropriated to restore the old Harbor Master Shack. So this is, APRA federally, that was put into good use. So Jade Anderton took the lead on project managing this with Carly Anderson, who is our Facilities Director. So this is now complete. We're, we're going to look to determine over the course of the summer what its final use will be, but now that we've restored the outside, new siding, new windows, new doors, and new roofing, this, this structure will be in great shape for at least 15 years, according to our Director of Special Services. What you don't have here, I do have a picture, but last Friday, you may have been alerted that there is a movie studio in town. They're doing a movie about Anthony Bourdain, and so they used the T-WAF part of their shooting last Friday, and they actually used the, the old Harbor Master Shack as part, and they put a banner on it, and they used that as part of their movie shoot. So again, this new updated Harbor Master Shack is being put to good use, and hopefully we'll see it in the movie when it comes, when it comes out. So a couple other things, just so folks are aware. The Halfway Pond Road resurfacing is complete. They, the DPW plans to start the Halfway Pond Road and Long Pond Road intersection in the next few days. We said we'd wait till school ends, so today was the last day of school for 13 out of 14 schools. One school, their last day will be tomorrow, so then, once school is wrapped up, we'll begin that Halfway Pond, Long Pond Road Intersection Improvement Program. I want to let the board know that the new rescue is now operational, so that's the rescue truck, which is going to come out of Pine Hills. This is our new company that the chief just enacted. It's three more firefighters who will work out of Pine Hills, so most of our fire stations carry one company with three firefighters. This, the Pine Hill Station will have six firefighters, the three previous firefighters and three additional firefighters to operate the rescue truck. So that's operational and provides more coverage and more response time throughout the, throughout the community. And I just, some good news, just this afternoon, we went out to bid for the municipal aggregation program, so that's our electricity program that we've been operating since 2017. So we went out to bid, and we awarded a contract for approximately 13 cents per kilowatt hour. This will take effect on October 1. So when we talk about high energy costs, we cannot control the, the cost to deliver the electricity, but we, we do have some control over the cost of the electricity itself. So in this situation, we signed a four-year agreement, so we'll have a consistent kilowatt per hour cost of 13.5 cents. We expect that'll save the average electric user about $100 per year. But interesting, this program also has a lower aggregation rate for low-income qualified individuals, which we're expecting for a low-income qualified individual, it'll save approximately $243 per year. So these are, you know, significant savings when it comes to trying to save money around energy. And so I know the board's talked a lot about this in the past. We're doing everything that we can to help our residents with this program. So I'll end there. Again, I know it's been late, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brindisi. Any questions from board members for Mr. Brindisi? All right. Thank you. So that brings us into Select Board discussion. Does anyone have any new business? Any letters? Any old business? In terms of old business, the Master Plan Survey, the most recent survey for the community-wide master plan is still up, but it ends, I think, on Friday. You can access that through the town's website. But if you haven't filled out that survey, we are trying to do everything we can to get as much community input into the master planning process as possible, so please do spend the time to fill out that survey if you have not done so so far. And if you are watching a town broadcast meeting at 10:25 on a Tuesday, you probably have something to say. So hopefully you will avail yourself of that and, and have your voice be heard in the master plan process that will inform community development over the next 10 to 20 years. Any other old business? All right. Seeing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right. Mr. Quintle moves. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Has been seconded. Any objection? All right. Mr., Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. Thank you all.